Good morning, everyone, and welcome to the council meeting of Tuesday the 5th of August 2025. In terms of health and safety, if the alarm sounds, please make your way to the nearest emergency exit. And the assembly point is down on Devonport Road towards the Strand. Please be aware that this meeting is being livestreamed and the video will be publicly available on YouTube. Members, could you please remember to speak clearly into your microphones and only one speaker at a time? And just a reminder, if everyone could please turn off your mobile phones. I'd like to hand over to councillor Baker, please, for a opening karakia.
Atamari, tatoa katoa ko hui mai nei tinaata o tira koutou e mataki takiana ki tokoutou kaanga. Yeah, ngamihio te wa, ngamihio i raru nga ahua tangao te wa ki a tatoa katoa. Um, mei to tatoa karakia, katika me faifaka roa na matai, o tatoa ki um, uh, te tiriti o, te tiriti o Waitangi, e noho kirungainga, anga pakitaro to tatoa nei fari. Um, it's been a little while since we've had our, um, the Treaty of Waitangi, um, papers up on, on the wall. Um, having been in this office for a couple of months now or so, so it's really awesome to, to see those hung up. Um, and I want to acknowledge Uncle Deez and Darlene for prompting that to occur. Um, something that always, um, sits in my heart and in my head when it comes to the Treaty of Waitangi is something that Moana Jackson said. Um, and he said that the treaty to me has never been about treaty rights. It's always been about the rightness that comes from people accepting their obligations to each other. Um, so my hope is that those that sit around this table, that come into this room, when they look and reflect on, um, those papers on the wall, that they remember the responsibilities to one another as human beings. Um, the importance that comes with upholding one's mana, one's modi and conducting yourself or ourselves in a manner that is, um, full of respect and full of araha and kindness regardless, regardless of where you sit on, um, any decision or discussion that takes place. So with that, I'll open up our karakia and then we'll get into our super cool council meeting for the day. Meinoi tatoa, kimi hia te porangahau te ao, ke yo rangi, ke yo fenua, ke ngamata o te ariki. Ke matanuku, ke matarangi, ke reira koe taane te wai ora, inga maungaru, inga wa para fenua, hereiutaki taiki tangaroa e. Ko koe, ko au, ko taua nei, fitiau, fiti fitiora, haramaita toki, homeie, hui e, ta eki e, tena tatoa.
Uh, thank you councillor Baker. Uh, call for apologies, so it looks like we've got a full complement. Uh, so we will move on to the public forum. And our first speaker is Genevieve Whitson, representing downtown Taonga. Uh, Genevieve, you'll have five minutes to speak, including any time for questions. If you could just please push the, the little button so you can make your mic red and then we'll get into it.
Okay, can everyone hear me?
Thank you.
Okay, good morning, Mayor Drysdale and councillors. Um, on behalf of the board and members of downtown Taonga, I'd like to thank you for the opportunity to speak today. I'm here representing the board and our members to provide feedback in relation to the waterfront Central Plaza project and to also show our support for the city centre streetscape project. So we are a membership organisation and our utmost priority is supporting and advocating on behalf of the city centre businesses within our bounded area. Specifically at this point in time where we see hospitality and retail businesses particularly challenged. So a number of businesses have expressed concern and distress in relation to the lack of communication and pause on the waterfront Central Plaza project. The area directly opposite the strand, particularly opposite Masonic Park, looks quite unattractive. It would be in the best interests of the council, the city centre businesses and enabling greater access for the public to the playground to get this project completed within the next one to two months. The impact of these delays on some of the businesses includes a decline in foot traffic and revenue for businesses on the strand who are directly opposite the railway crossing, disrupting the flow of foot traffic to the playground and the newly erected public toilets as the public need to walk several blocks down to access it. So there's been some negative pub, uh, feedback from the public that the area looks unsightly, which in turn impacts their motivation to come into the city centre. And there's been a further negative perception on parking, seeing a vacant space opposite the strand that some people feel could be utilised for car parking. We ask the council to please complete this project as a matter of urgency to support the city centre and the businesses. But now on to a more positive note. Um, downtown Taonga would like to show its support for the city centre streetscape project investment, which we believe will really support further foot traffic and revenue in the city centre. With many of the streets being nearly thirty years old and in desperate need of repair, it is detracting tourists and public from engaging the city centre to its fullest. And there are many benefits to the project. So it will improve access and better connections between existing and developing parts of the city and encourage people to stay longer and spend more time here productively. Uh, it will help make the streets more suitable as the population expands in the coming years and also reduce emissions. Uh, it'll attract more tourists and public interest here while also supporting city centre businesses to operate in a more aesthetically attractive and safe environment. And it also supports and aligns with downtown Taonga's long-term strategy of creating a city centre for everyone. Meaning no matter who you are, what you do, or whether, or whether you have accessibility needs, the city centre can cater and support you. So we've seen the positive impact of streetscape investments previously, including Elizabeth Street East and Durham Street. And that has greatly improved functionality and also the general look. And we support this project progressing in a cost-effective manner and encourage TCC to pursue option one, which includes the community engagement. Thank you for your time, councillors. We look forward to continuing to work with you to make the city centre great again.
Thank you very much, Genevieve, for your speech. Uh, now, is there any questions? Councillor Taylor.
Good morning. Um, just to sort of unpicking what you're saying about the Central Plaza and it's looking a bit scruffy. Um, realistically, that isn't going to happen in the next two months. So do you think there's something we should be doing just to maybe hide some of the stuff or tidy it up perhaps with some screens?
I think, um, I think if there's any way to make the area that's in a, a state of, kind of I suppose, construction a little bit tidier and maybe if there was a way to sort of, um, I think actually even just communicating to the businesses, um, what, what the reason for the delay is and also the timeframe around that would be really, really helpful. But I think if you can make that area look a little bit more attractive, that would be very, very helpful.
Right, is there any other questions? All right, well, thank you very much for your time today and appreciate you coming to, to speak to us.
Okay, thank you, Mayor Drysdale. Thank you, councillors.
Just confirming if we have another speaker here. Um, but in the meantime, just going to walk, uh, walk through the rest of the agenda. We'll come back to that. Um, so, uh, section four, acceptance of late items. Um, there is a replacement attachment which has been advised, uh, which is a local waters done well, preferred water services delivery model, affordability, lowest income groups. Uh, there is also a position paper from Tanga Tofenua on local waters done well, which has been loaded into Stella. Uh, there is one late item, eleven point eight city centre parking, parking permits. Uh, and I call for a mover and seconder to accept the later item, um, as an item of business. Uh, the recommendation is that eleven point eight city centre parking, parking permits to be considered as a light item for inclusion in the agenda and considered at the meeting. This, um, the reason this was late is that the information was not available at the time of the agenda being published. Uh, so call for a mover, councillor Schuller, thank you, councillor Roseboom. Uh, any discussion on that item? Uh, if there's no discussion, all those in favour? Those against? Uh, that is carried, thanks. So that will be as part of our agenda at eleven point eight. Uh, confidential business to be transferred into the open. Got any note? Um, and is there any change of the order to, of business? No, uh, as we say, we'll, we'll look at how the day goes as to whether we need to, to change anything around. Uh, we have a couple of quite chunky items today as, as we're looking at the delivery of, of water services. Um, okay, uh, and I can confirm we don't have any other speaker. Um, but obviously the Tanga Tofenua, um, position paper on local waters done well has been tabled at the meeting, uh, so that can be considered. Uh, now we move on to confirmation of minutes. And if we deal with seven point one, uh, first, which is the minutes of a council meeting held on the fourteenth of July twenty twenty five. Uh, you will find that on, page ten. And just had a couple of corrections on the externals. Um, a couple of names there, Nicola Compton and Mary Dillon. If we could just, um, correct those, those names. Is there any other corrections to those minutes? Yep, councillor Taylor.
At the very tail end of the, the minutes, um, it references the meeting that they were approved at, which I presume is this meeting. It does say the twenty second of July, which probably is incorrect.
Yep. Yep, so that will be corrected. They were intended to go to that meeting, so. Uh, with those corrections, uh, I now ask for a mover and seconder that the minutes of a council meeting held on fourteenth of July twenty twenty five could be confirmed as a true and correct record. Councillor Taylor, I'm happy to second that. Uh, all those in favour?
Aye.
Those against? That is carried, thank you. Now we move on to, uh, seven point two minutes of a council meeting held on the twenty second of July twenty twenty five. Uh, this can be found on page twenty five of the agenda. Again, is there any corrections to those minutes? It was quite a short, um, short minutes as we considered the RMA. We've got a mover and seconder to accept those, um, that the minutes of a council meeting held on the twenty second of July twenty twenty five be confirmed as a true and correct record. Uh, councillor Roseboom, thank you. Councillor Schuller, thank you. All those in favour? Those against? Uh, that is carried, thank you. Move on to, uh, section eight, declarations of conflicts of interest. Uh, has anyone got any conflicts to declare? If there's no, uh, no conflicts to declare, um, if you do become aware of a conflict during the meeting, uh, please, um, put it to my attention and we will, uh, record it then. Uh, there is no deputations, presentations or petitions, uh, and there is no recommendations from other committees. Therefore, uh, we'll move into the business items and, uh, our first item on the agenda today is eleven point one. Status update on actions from prior council meetings. Um, that's on page thirty one. Uh, we have four items that have been closed, uh, since our last meeting. And I would ask if there's any questions for staff on, on any of those? Yep, councillor Taylor.
Item three point one on page thirty three, uh, talks about the cellphone tower meetings, which I think we've held those. I'm not sure. It says it's pending, but I think they're pretty much tidied up now.
Yeah, okay. Is that Sarah, I think, holding the pen on that, so make a note of that. Is there any other questions? Councillor Schuller.
I'm sorry, my questions on Stella were all lost, so I have hopefully recorded them, um, somewhat. So just on the, there was a, so on page thirty six, eleven point four, um, the breakdown, it just says provide a breakdown of the cost of the three three eight of the new bay venues facility at Cameron Road. Are we talking Homaru there? And it just says provided as part of the annual plan preparation report. So I just, the intention is always on these so that when it's closed, we know how it was closed. So provided as part of annual plan and preparation reports isn't really telling us that. So can I just get clarity, please, on that one? Um, and then I've made a note on page thirty four about BBL assets. Um, is there a... So just a question, my, my question is, um, we have had some discussion about BBL asset ownership and whether they should all be, we should transfer ownership. And I just wondered if as an additional item we can have to understand how other councils of a similar size treat community assets and amenities like, um, we do in Tooranga, because I'm, just as a comparison. I think that's with Homaru transferring ownership, it is. So it's on, um, the ownership and operation transfer. That's mine.
Right, is there any other questions on this item? Uh, if there's no further questions, then I ask for a mover and seconder to receive the report status update on actions from prior council meetings. Uh, and attachment two can be transferred into the open when the report that generated the action is no longer confidential. We've got a mover and seconder for that. Councillor Schuller, thank you. Councillor Kurak, thank you. Uh, is there any discussion on those items? Right, uh, therefore I'll put the recommendation to the council. Ask all those in favour? Those against? Uh, that is carried, thank you very much. Uh, now we move into the main reports for today, uh, which is on local waters done well and the preferred delivery model. Um, I note we have eleven point two, uh, which is the update report. Uh, as you're aware, on, uh, the, uh, last council meeting when we considered this, uh, we, we considered eleven point three, uh, local waters done well, preferred water services delivery model, uh, which was left to lie on the table. Uh, and, and so therefore there, there has been an update with, with some further information that has been requested. Um, I think, uh, I'm, I'm quite happy to, uh, to ask Christine to speak to this report. And, um, while we, we will sort of, uh, deal, we can, we can deal with, with both of these as, as one. Um, obviously the recommendations and the approval of these, these two reports will be done separately, so.
So, um, thanks, Mayor Mahi. So I'll just give a bit of an overview and a short introduction just for, um, perhaps people who are connecting in online trying to understand where we're at in the process. So as the mayor noted, you received a report on the fourteenth of July for a decision around the service delivery model. Um, then you made a decision to leave that report on the table. So what we've done is provided an update report that covers the issues and what's happened since then. Uh, at that fourteenth of July meeting, you were specifically asked for further engagement and conversation with Tanga Tofenua. And in the update report in paragraph twelve, it notes, uh, six hui that were held, um, from the period of the eighteenth of July through to the thirty first of July. And, uh, you've received today the tabled Tanga Tofenua position. So as a result of, um, those huis and, and work that was done together with Tanga Tofenua, Tanga Tofenua have provided a position, um, and that is provided as, as a tabled item today. And we'll cover, um, a suggested approach for that in a, in a moment. So just to give an overview of, um, the bigger picture, uh, local government, local waters done well is a major piece of government reform. All local authorities are required to make a decision on the water services delivery model that they will proceed with. Uh, Taonga City Council has received a number of reports on this, including a full business case, comprehensive financial modelling discussions, including public workshops. You went to the public and sought views, submissions were received and you've received a submission analysis of, of that. You've also given staff a range of questions and requests for further information. Uh, they have all been responded to and much of that information is reflected in the supplementary information that's provided on the fourteenth agenda and again, uh, provided again on today's agenda. So today's agenda provides a complete picture of that. Uh, the decision that you make today on a service delivery model will be reflected in the water services delivery plan and you have a statute requirement to lodge that with the Department of Internal Affairs by the third of September. Just a few key points that I'd just like to highlight. Um, one is that status quo is not an option. Under the local waters done well legislation, there will be an economic regulator, which is the Commerce Commission. And there will be a drinking water regulator, which is Tamata R O Y. So these regulators have to have a role ensuring a whole lot of new requirements are dealt with and council either in-house or through a water organisation is going to have to position itself to be able to respond and address all of those new requirements. So the key thing here is that the legislation markedly changes the whole waters environment and the requirements for local government. So there, there isn't a, a status quo type option. Something has to change in any scenario. The other point to note is that TCC in around the twenty third of June entered into a MOU with the government on city and regional deals. Uh, and the ministers of, um, Bishop and, uh, the Minister of Finance jointly had a statement at the time of those city deals and noted really clearly their expectation that the regions would comprehensively adopt priority central government reforms, including local waters done well. So those are sort of the context statements. Um, in terms of today's decision, yes, you have two reports. The, the update report is proposed as a received report and then proposing that you make the resolutions under the second, more comprehensive report. Uh, staff have provided for you consideration some resolutions to acknowledge and respond to the Tanga Tofenua position paper. Uh, it might form a starting point for you to, to consider. Um, and also as this is a relatively complex decision with lots of different options, we have provided a suggested resolution pathway. So how you might be able to move through your decision-making today, um, uh, not identifying any particular option for you. The, um, the previous recommendations stand. This is more about how you can work through the decision-making process step by step, uh, to assist you to, to do that today. So I'm happy to provide that. Catherine and I are happy to answer any questions and I think that hopefully that overview's been helpful.
Thank you. I'm, I'm aware that we have previously asked a number of questions on eleven point three. Um, but I am happy to, to have anyone that with questions on either eleven point two or eleven point three to, to ask them now. Yeah, are you, yeah, open to both reports.
Um, just a detailed question, sorry if I may, just on process. So just on page thirty eight point five, um, following completion of consultation period, Thames Coromandel District Council approached council and that's looking like elected members, um, indicating a preference to join a water organisation. Is that, was that actually, I don't recall myself being approached and I asked some of my colleagues. Is that just a, was that actually TCC staff that were approached?
It was a CEO to CEO approach.
Okay, so just, just for clarity, um, we're trying to have a definition that elected members are council with a C and otherwise it's TCC staff or TCC CEO. It just makes it clearer for us, if that's all right. Thank you.
Councillor Crowther.
Um, yeah, I'm wondering if you can talk through the optimal debt, um, scenario in terms of debt to asset value. Um, and I'm interested, because I understand DIA is online, so I'm, I'm interested in their response as well to the context here being that these reforms, according to the minister and according to DIA officials, are geared up to provide for a more financially sustainable approach to delivering water services, waters, services across the country. And one of the big goals is to get councils not using much of their debt headroom to use more of it and to deliver water services more cost-effectively as a result of that. Um, I'm interested in how DIA is seeing Tooranga, given that we do not have that problem. We have, if you like, we're heading in the opposite direction.
I can make some comments. I'm not sure about, uh, saying what the optimal debt position is, but the, um, just sort of giving a background to the waters reform and the CCO option is that the waters activities are, um, activities that have a high, um, high level of asset base and, um, and therefore are akin to a lot of, um, entities that carry a lot of debt because they've got a lot of infrastructure to invest in, but they have a very solid revenue stream that is associated with services to do with that, with those assets. And that, uh, water and wastewater are absolutely in that space. And so, um, it's very easy to identify charges and, um, charge the fair cost of providing water services. So they are identified as activities that fit quite comfortably within the CCO model. Um, our main lender, which is LGFA, uh, recognised that and are prepared to lend up to a much higher debt to revenue. I guess in the old way of thinking, a debt to revenue ratio. Um, but they have, they, they now look at the ratio called free funds from operations against debt, which is actually a surplus, operating surplus plus other capital revenues against your, um, debt level. And have identified that you can move to, for a larger CCO, which is what Taonga is, you can move to an eight percent FFO to debt ratio. So that is, um, provides more opportunity for those activities to carry debt than happens within the current council because we are overall constrained to a lower, what would effectively be FFO to debt, but we talk about debt to revenue ratio. So, um, the bespoke covenant just for council is, is about three, is three thirty allowing for debt headroom. And the FFO to debt enables an equivalent debt to ratio of a little bit over five hundred percent. So it gives a lot more capacity to borrow. Therefore, there is a choice about whether you want to put charges up or have higher debt, which obviously has to be paid for over time, but it means the consumer of the day isn't paying. When you are in quite an indebted position, if you've just invested in large infrastructure, you're not having to pay for it all more rapidly through higher charges, so it gives that option. So I'm not sure, so we did modelling, which represented the TCC model, and we have provided a dashboard, and it's talked about in the report, which says you're charging if you're in a CCO. And within a multi-council CCO, your charging would be by twenty thirty four, about four hundred and fifty, four hundred and seventy less on average than it would be if you were in-house. Because of that debt arrangement and that ability to have slightly higher debt, you're not having to charge enough surplus to bring that debt within the quad ratios of an in-house model. So it is also more favourable, just as a TCC only CCO, but it's slightly, the charges, I think we worked out over the ten years in the model, it's two hundred million difference in the charges that you need to make. And in a CCO, TCC only model, it's a hundred and ninety million is the variance. So that was from that modelling report and the dashboard that was spoken to on that. Happy to send that out again.
Counselor Crowther.
Just following up on that, I guess what I'm interested, in the information you sent last evening, which I think maybe some of us haven't had much chance to look at, that the last three years of the measure TCC page of that, is that modelling the Taronga only CCO option, where it talks about debt headroom, or the net debt operating revenue going through above five hundred percent?
So the tabs that are about each council are only that council's financials, so they relate back to the model material, but that's in the DIA template format. And then when you look at the whole of how the CCO looks as a whole, we've just added each council's results to get that CCO.
But just to clarify, the figures we got given prior to this information was not that Taronga City Council going in-house would have five hundred and twenty seven percent debt revenue ratio by twenty thirty four. So is this indicating that that has increased? Or what, can you clarify, like decode what this means?
So the model provides the three alternatives, which is in-house, TCC, CCO only, and TCC multi-CCO, from the perspective of what TCC's financials look like. The material we sent last night is the draft Water Services Delivery Plan templates. So that's where council, and that's the decision of today, council chooses what's the best delivery model that we want. And so at the present, based on the indications or indicative decisions so far, that is based on a multi-council CCO environment. So it's got the kind of the cost adjustments, the level of debt and interest, which is akin to that. It is not the in-house model, because you could not, if you go back to the model, that has much lower debt.
Okay, thank you. And I guess a follow-up to the follow-up. So if I'm understanding this, because it seems like quite a critical thing, that we are saying that because we are going in either with one or two other councils, depending on what happens with resolutions and at other councils as well as ours, that that will allow us to go above the five hundred percent debt revenue ratio, because we will be able to, if you like, borrow on the debt headroom that would exist potentially with one or other of the other councils. So that the five hundred and two percent, the five hundred and twenty-three percent, the five hundred and twenty-seven percent that are listed in the final three years, which are above the five hundred percent threshold, that is there because we are looking at a collaborative model and setting prices that would allow that debt revenue ratio. Am I correct in that?
Not entirely, because those numbers relate only to TCC. So if you look at, also on that page, you'll see the required times interest cover and FFO. And so we've just modelled, based on what we presented to you, sort of what we would see as if you were trying to make most use of that, stay within both those ratios. Within a TCC lens of keeping that ring fenced, you could get to those levels of borrowing. And as I said before, the FFO, which is the new kind of measure of LGFA for a CCO, is not exactly identical to debt to revenue. So it isn't just five hundred percent, it's gone a bit above that, but it's staying within, TCC being within that eight percent. So we're not actually in that information presented, utilising the debt headroom of other councils. But we've, our debt headroom is tight, we're staying reasonably close to those borrowing limits.
I know there's not definitive numbers, I know it's just some modelling, I know there are a lot of variables, I know that the, there are estimates around efficiencies, all that has got to be worked through. But I still am struggling to understand when the line that says debt to revenue limit is five hundred. I'm just trying to understand why you modelled it to go higher than five hundred. And I know there's an FFO rate, that's a different ratio, et cetera. So it throws up different numbers, and they are relative to each other, but they're not the same. But I'm still trying to figure out, why didn't you just keep it at five hundred or lower than five hundred when you model it?
Because we're modelling to the revised limits. The fact that the five hundred is in there is because it's a DIA template and they have it in there. So it would have probably been just as easy to have not had that in there, but the model that we produced was based on the new LGFA measures.
Counselor Shawla.
Thanks for that. Can I just get clarity on the, just the main comparison between the, over the ten years of the difference in the overall charges in-house and multi? Is it, did you say two hundred million? What's the high level numbers?
Yes, so two hundred million over that time is the difference in revenue being collected from the community for a multi-council CCO, and it was a hundred and ninety million for the revenue being collected from the community in a single council CCO. And that's over if you did it in-house.
Counselor Roseboom.
Thank you, Mayor. Minds, we've talked at length about the financial viability of our waters organisation. Mine's more about, we discussed the transferring of the water entity into the organisation. That's purely for management of the water as infrastructure. The ownership or the share ownerships remains with council, therefore the people of Taronga.
So in terms of the ultimate ownership, will retain with the shareholders of the water organisation? Yes.
Question. So that's under the current legislation. If at a future time a government changes or amends that legislation, do we have the ability to pull all our assets out of the waters organisation before that legislation becomes active? I'm concerned about keeping our waters assets as the assets of the people of Taronga, and it cannot be removed or changed in any way.
So the current legislation, which is still a bill, but it's come back from the Select Committee, so presume it's there or thereabouts, provides, one, that there shall not be privatisations to ownership of the assets, as you say, currently would stay with the community. It also has some specific provisions that enable the council to remove assets that are in a water organisation and bring them back into the council. And it also enables a council to, and there are some provisions around it, to basically remove or not continue to be a shareholder in a water organisation. So there are out clauses. So as long as the legislation retained those out clauses, yes, you could. And you would expect that to be the case, because any entity that a council has ownership of, it still has ultimate decision on those assets and where they go as the owner of the shares, of the shares in that entity.
Counselor Crowther.
Yeah, I'd still be interested if we could hear from DIA around their response to the debt issue. So given the public statements by Department of Internal Affairs to Waitaki Council, which is obviously in a very, very different position from Taronga or our prospective partners, but the commentary from DIA officials there and in other public meetings has been consistently saying that the measure, the financial measures for financial sustainability will be done in an impartial way, that are, will be the same for all New Zealand councils and CCOs. And so my question is that, at that meeting, the DIA officials were suggesting that the particular council needed to up its debt and up its charges and get towards a ratio of debt as a percentage of total assets of twenty percent. We're already significantly over there. I want to understand what the DIA says in terms of, if they're asking councils all around the country to increase debt to get to twenty percent, what their comments are in regards to a council like ours, where we're already over that, and we are looking to triple our debt for waters over the next nine years from now.
Welcome, Jaren. Are you going to answer that?
Yes, thank you. Just waiting for the invitation, your worship. Thanks very much, councillors and Counselor Crowther. Thank you for the question. I would start by just clearly outlining to councillors the requirements that are in the Local Government Water Services Preliminary Arrangements Act, the legislation that governs the water service delivery plans. So as your council officers have already stated, councils are required to deliver a plan to DIA by the third of September twenty twenty five. Legislation requires essentially two primary tests in essence. Firstly, that the information requirements and the legislation have been met. And secondly, that the plan demonstrates financial sustainability. We've provided guidance to councils, both written and in council meetings, around financial sustainability. We look at it through three primary lenses. The first is revenue sufficiency. So is the revenue being collected to deliver water services sufficient to cover the cost of service delivery? Secondly, investment sufficiency, and whether the capital investment into water services sufficient to meet all levels of service requirements and compliance requirements. And then finally, financing sufficiency. So do the, essentially, are the financing covenants that have been articulated by LGFA met by the plan? So those are the, those are the three primary lenses. In our supporting material, we've provided sort of additional ratios that councils consider, but from a legislative perspective, essentially, we are assessing whether there is enough revenue to meet the level of investment required, and whether that level of investment is sufficient to meet compliance requirements.
Yeah, Counselor Crowther.
Well, can you comment then on the fact that Taronga City Council is talking about a CCO, providing lower waters charges for our residents than if it was in-house? But when we model that, we are talking about a five hundred and twenty seven percent debt to revenue ratio, and I think from memory, was it twenty-eight percent or something, debt to asset ratio by twenty thirty four? Like, we hear, we understand, I'm sure most of us in the room understand, why you are having a clear message, and the minister's been very clear about the need to take on more debt, that most councils around New Zealand are struggling, obviously, more than us. My question is, when it comes to our council, aren't we going about this the opposite way? We're taking on, in the words of one of our kumatau last week, you know, the debt is going to be left for future generations, it's not disappearing. So going that high on debt, do you have any comment at all on the financial sustainability of having such high debt ratios?
Yeah, I do. So we've worked closely with the local government funding agency throughout this process, and the financial ratios that they have articulated are based on a range of factors that are present in a CCO. So they include the professionalisation of water service delivery, independent board decision-making, constitution, satisfactory shareholder arrangements, et cetera. And LGFA also look at the size of the entity in terms of the number of water connections and things like the geographic spread of the CCO that's a joint water service CCO. And essentially, that informs financing metrics that they are comfortable to lend to, taking all of those risk factors into account. For a multi-council CCO of the size being considered by your council, that would likely put you around the eight percent FFO to net debt ratio, which is the bespoke covenant that LGFA are ascribing to water services CCOs. And our review of your draft water service delivery plan would demonstrate to us that you would meet that requirement. So from a financing sufficiency perspective, that demonstrates that you would have the ability to service the debt over a long period of time, which is a feature of utility-based financing.
I think, I'm not conveying my point clearly enough, so apologies, that, I guess the other way of angling in on this is that we are promoting this as a ring-fenced option. So from a DIA point of view, of course, collectively, the three councils being modelled would do exactly as you say. But when I look at the Taronga residents, you know, the total impact on Taronga in terms of charges and debt, we are, we currently have the lowest charges of the three councils, and we currently have the highest debt. So just to give you a feel for where those two things are. So the question is, if we're ring-fencing, can this be a permanent ring-fencing arrangement from a DIA point of view? Because if it is, then from a Taronga residents' point of view, it probably won't make much difference what the debt headroom is for Thames Coramandil or Western Bay. The issue for them is the debt that they are servicing ring-fenced for Taronga, which will be immensely high, according to our modelling.
So answer the first question first, Counselor. Can it be ring-fenced on an ongoing basis? So the answer to that question is, is yes, it can be. So those structuring arrangements within your gift is shareholding councils or owning councils to make. There are mechanisms in the legislation for those settings to be reviewed. For example, a three-yearly water services strategy has to be produced by the water organisation, that has to give effect to a statement of expectation that shareholding councils set on the water services CCO. So in a way, that review of those ring-fenced settings is built into that three-year cycle, because pricing considerations have to be considered as part of that three-yearly cycle. So that's the, I guess, the answer to the first question. Those ring-fencing arrangements can continue. I think for Taronga City Council in particular, you are in a strong position as a standalone council, as a standalone CCO. You know, our assessment is that your council would likely to be able to meet the financial sustainability requirements as a single council CCO, for example. But there are benefits also beyond the financial in a joint model, and those benefits, you know, relate to increased resilience across the region, particularly with regard to greater geographic spread and the ability to respond more effectively to natural disasters. There are benefits in a stronger, more capable and larger workforce across the region. There are benefits in a larger, more certain and more cost-effective supply chain. There are benefits to enhanced environmental outcomes. So there are a range of non-financial benefits that also go hand in hand with the financial benefits of a joint CCO.
Thank you. Thank you.
Councillor Corret.
Yeah, hi, Jaren. Where a council chooses to include stormwater in a CCO, it's my understanding that the charges would have to be taxed across all, all properties on a flat basis, like a UAGC. If that's correct, it's a concern of many members of this council that because of the regressive nature of that, that charging regime and therefore that impact on the low-end properties. So if I'm correct, is there any talk or discussion within government about how to change that approach to allow a more progressive charging regime for stormwater?
Thanks for the question, councillor. Stormwater charging, not a specialist area of expertise for me, but I do have Cameron Walker joining me who, who may be able to share some information from a financial perspective on, on stormwater. Before I go to him, I would say that there is flexibility built into the legislation on provision of stormwater services, including whether stormwater services transfer from a council to a CCO or not. So you have the flexibility within those delivery arrangements to consider that. And there's also flexibility on an ongoing basis to be able to look at the most effective charging mechanisms as well. But I may ask Cameron just to, if he has any further, more detailed information.
Good morning, your worship and councillors. On the stormwater charging mechanisms, no, it does not need to apply to all properties at the same, same rate, much like a UAGC. The Water Services Council-controlled organization has the ability to set its own stormwater charges. Within the WS CCO, the stormwater charges do need to move away from ratable value within five years. How the CCO sets those charges will be up to the management of the CCO. Thank you.
Follow-up. Thank you, Cameron. In terms of moving away from the ratable value, what are we talking about there? Could you expand on that, please? In terms of the options?
At, at this stage, I would be theorizing because that is up to the management of the CCO and how they decide to charge. So unfortunately, I, I, there are a multitude of options that a CCO can elect for when charging for stormwater. Yeah, I'm, I'm sorry, I can't go further into, into different combinations for that.
So what is the rationale around moving away from ratable value as a basis for charging? Please?
Sorry, but we're, we're moving outside of my remit on the, on the finances more into policy decisions. Yeah, I, I don't have the answer for that one there.
Councillor Rollaston.
Gail to Cameron, I just want to just be clear, just following up on councillor Corret's question. After that, I think you said after five years, the CCO has discretion or whatever the word you used. So practically, could they use the council ratable database? Use the valuations as, as a method to do that? Is that, is that an option? Because I think where councillor Corret's, I think some of the concerns is at the moment, the higher value properties through the ratable value are paying more. But I guess the question is, is that, or can you answer, is that an option that the new organization could could use if they wanted to?
Now, the, the provision, sorry, thank you for your question there councillor, but the, the provision around stormwater charging mechanisms is contained in the bill at the moment, rather than the act. So that has not yet been finalized. My understanding is the CCO will need to move away from charging as ra, on ratable value if the CCO is to charge for stormwater. So a short answer to your question, if they're still using the ratable value and the CCO is charging for stormwater, that will not be permitted under the bill, but that is yet to be finalized and enacted.
Deputy, okay, we might just, is there any further questions for DIA? Councillor Schuller.
Three as well, or just eleven point two at the moment?
Oh, both, yeah, either report. Have we just, anything for DIA if we ask?
Oh, I'm sorry. No, 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 it was for here.
Yeah.
Okay, no, thank you.
Yeah, councillor Crowther.
Yeah, thank you to the officials for, for making your time this morning. My, my last question on this is, I guess, trying to sort of get a bit of a sense and where you are at in regards to other Bay of Plenty councils. So I understand that there are political aspects here and there are calls the minister will make and there are decisions that local authorities will make before their elections and after potentially. But I'm looking for the, just the DIA official assessment of, of councils. I'm particularly interested in Whakatane Council. And you raised that, I think I might have seen one of the speakers in Waitaki talking specifically around those, some of those Bay of Plenty councils. And I'm just looking at what happens if you assess one council in the Bay of Plenty not to be compliant with its water services delivery plan and everyone else is? You know, how are you framing up your, your approach to that? Because we're getting very close to that time and I presume you've talked it through a lot and worked through the options and I know you've talked to all the mayors there. So, so it's a real issue in our region and we're trying to show some regional leadership here and understand what may or may not happen after the plans are delivered.
Sure, thanks councillor. So the review process, the DIA has shared with councils and is available on the website, includes receipt of the plan on the third of September. Throughout September and October, DIA will be reviewing those plans. Part of that plan review process includes engaging with other agencies that are involved in water service delivery. So that includes NIFCO, particularly from a infrastructure perspective. The Commerce Commission is the future economic regulator, the local government funding agency from a financing perspective, and the Water Services Authority from a waste water and drinking water compliance perspective. So that, that plan review process, as I said, plays out during September and October. In October, the first independent panel will meet. So the review team essentially make a series of recommendations to a panel. And then we're able to benefit from the wisdom of, of those panel members. And again, they include senior representatives from those agencies that I've just mentioned. And then following that panel review process, we make a recommendation to the secretary for local government as to whether to accept the plan or not. Secretary for Local Government Paul James has the statutory responsibility to an accept, to accept a plan. So until we, until we receive plans and final plans, you know, it's very hard to determine kind of what the final mix will be, including configuration of joint models and single council CCOs. So within the Bay of Plenty region, you're correct, we've had a number of conversations over a period of time. You mentioned Whakatane Council, so their public resolution is for a a joint, a preference for a joint water service delivery model. They name particular councils in the Eastern Bay of Plenty region within that preferred joint arrangement as well. However, not all of those councils have resolved, have made the same resolution. So we, we will receive each plan, we will judge each plan on its merits and then we'll make that recommendation through to the secretary as to whether the plan meets legislative requirements or not. And then the secretary will make the final accept decision. If we receive a plan that the secretary doesn't feel he can accept, he can request further information or an amendment to that plan. Or he cannot accept the plan. And then from there, the Minister of Local Government has a range of interventions available to him that include assistance through a facilitator and a crown water services specialist if, if those are deemed appropriate. So quite, quite a bit of water to fly under the bridge, councillor, excuse the pun, before we'd be in a position to understand what the exact makeup might be in the broader Bay of Plenty region. However, to, to address your question about Whakatane in particular, you know, their, their preference is for a, is for a joint model and they have passed a resolution on it.
Thank you for that. And I'd, I'd comment that you potentially could have a, another career in diplomacy, whereas I'm not sure if Marlin would be chosen ahead of you. But I'd be interested in what he'd say.
Marlin's currently enjoying the sunshine in Rarotonga, councillor.
Yeah, I heard that. Good on him.
Sorry, is that for DIA councillor Schuller?
Yeah, just because I've got two questions, but I'll ask one that way, one that way later. What are the likely consequences of not meeting the deadline on the third of September? Obviously, you've got a lot of people to go through.
Yeah, I mean, I, I, councillor, thanks for the question. I mean, we've, we've received actually latest count about twenty-five draft plans for review already. We've received three final plans. I, I think across the country, broadly speaking, people are in good shape to meet that third of September legislative deadline. We're not anticipating a large number or any particular councils missing it. There's certainly haven't been requests for extensions to that timeframe at this stage.
All right, have we got any further questions for DIA? Okay, thank you very much, Jaren and, and Cameron for joining us today. I really appreciate your time and thank you for answering all our questions.
Thank you, your worship.
Thank you, your worship.
All right, now we'll resume. I, I think deputy mayor Schuller had some questions for staff.
Thank you, mayor. So just in terms of the, I guess, the, I'm trying to look at, so this is on eleven point three, just really looking through the pros and cons. When we look at the seven hundred and twenty-six people who did submit, I think the difference between the most favored and least favored was only about two point five percent. Is that correct? And it's just, it's putting it up that it's a, a definitely, this is the favored option. But I think if I looked at the, the difference between them, it's on seven hundred and twenty-six, it's a pretty close call, isn't it? So I just, I'm just not sure why, why that wasn't noted because it's a really close call between those submissions. Is that right?
I don't have the percentage at my fingertips. I think we did note in the report from staff that they, they were relatively close in terms of the, of the mix and the percentages of, the, the numbers of people and the percentages of people that supported each is clearly there for you to see.
I think my, my numbers, I think, are only about two point five percent. So I think it's just saying it's a pretty close call there. The other thing is, just on risks, this is a, there are political risks at both local and government and, and central government. And I just wonder if the conversations have happened in terms of what the central government, if there is a change of government next year, where, where that is possibly, might that go? And whether you feel as your conversations with both elected members and other councils that we're talking to and their staff, what the risk is of changes of councils in October this year. So just at a central and local government, can I just get your view on where you see the risk of that in terms of our decisions today, please?
I think in terms of central government, if the
I can't hear very well, sorry.
Sorry, if there's a change in terms of central government, we can only go off the legislation that we currently know. We're, we're not aware of any policy statements or statements that other potential governments, the parties that might be in, in power would take on these matters. So there's not even a, a position that we'd be able to interpret. I think the key thing is that either the legislation changes or as, as we've noted before, you have out options. Currently, the proposed implementation date is not till twenty twenty-seven and a central government election is late twenty twenty-six. So presumably, if there is going to be some policy change, you'll know about it. It would be part of the campaign next year. So we can only work off what we know. In terms of other councils, the, and the, our understanding is that Western Bay, if they decide to go with the joint water organization and they're having a decision today, they've got the state commitment agreement proposed today as well because they are ceasing meetings prior to the election. So there would be a resolution. If they so wish, they would be passing a resolution to enter into a commitment agreement. And so then you would have that commitment agreement and yes, any incoming council at any point can trigger the exit clauses as, as could TCC. So they're, they're always pathways that other parties might make decisions that change things.
Thank you. And a finance question, of course. So in light of elected members being, trying to be diligent for our people in terms of costs, we've been given some numbers in terms of the potential cost of what I think is in the report, it's called a significant program of work. We've, I think that's about six million over two years, which I'll ask for confirmation that that's in the annual plan. Can you just, and I think there's another comment that you would anticipate that a CEO, a board and the executive and project teams will be in place a year before we got to the, a C, a water CCO having to start. Can you just confirm how strong those numbers are? Because we're, we're at a stage where we want to be able to say we know what overheads are, we want to be able to have accountability for our CEO and somebody else's CEO if it's there. How much work has been done and how confident are you in those numbers that we could then say that's the approved budget and we're not anticipating that there's, there's too much movement from that?
So, so the annual plan for this year does have a portion of that six million. It's loan funded and the intention would be that that debt transfers to the entity to be paid back rather than remaining within the core council. So yes, that first year is, the, the remaining part of the six million would be in the draft annual plan that you'll consider towards the end of this year for the following financial year. The, the money was based on a very, very high-level assessment of the various work streams and, and overall about a transitional staff of around twenty-five across those work streams, which includes the assets and contracts and delivery, the financial aspects, transferring debt and, and the legal aspects. There is a separate amount of money that's been put within there for digital work. But as discussed, that's partly matters like water billing and the asset system that will need, wherever you decide to land on this delivery will need to be addressed. The water billing is already on a very old platform and is part of that consideration. So yes, both of those things are budgeted. That is different from stranded overhead. So the stranded overhead question, which we have talked about is if you set up a new entity, what areas of overhead can we not just simply transfer so that the remaining costs are proportionate? And so there's been some very high-level consideration of that. That has really just been a desktop exercise and the annual plans, as we develop them, will need to look, as they always do, at the level of overhead that is required to support the business going forward. So those will come to you in annual plans over time.
So that stranded debt, we're still anticipating, that latest number is still nine So that stranded debt, we're still anticipate, that latest number is still nine million over three years, is that correct?
So that's the um
Sorry, stranded overheads.
That that is ju- was just for the purpose of modelling a very high level assessment and we have not done any more work yet. But over the next two years, through the work streams, as we look at setting uh ourselves up to satisfy the economic regulator, any um work that is continuing to be done by council for that waters entity will need to go through the rigors of, is that what is required? Um and any areas that would just be a straight transfer of people and systems would, that will be clarified through those work streams and considered by council over the next two years.
Sorry, just so just clarification on the the loan funded amount of the six million, are you saying that's not part of the five hundred and ninety nine million or whatever the the overheads we've approved this year or it is? It's part of that approved overhead spend or not?
Yes, for this year it is part of it.
Okay, thank you.
I'll just follow up. Uh so page forty nine, uh paragraph forty three is is where we we talk about the setup costs. I I just had a question, is is that cost uh all TCC or or would that be shared between us and and potential partners?
So so that's what TCC has budgeted to put into the costs, um but we are still developing that um and collectively with the the partners, we are looking at these different work streams and trying to get more detail in and and the um but at present, we would expect, and I'll get Cathy to confirm this, that the other councils would have budgeted an additional amount. So for a a large CCO, it would be the six million plus what it costs the other councils, but um any changes on that?
Oh, good morning. Um no, there's no change from that original six million dollar figure that we gave you, but that was a combined number for the across the, would be shared across the three councils. So the the money that is in um stated there in um paragraph forty three is what's actually in TCC budgets. Um and there's two sets of money there, ones around transition costs, where we thought we would be spending a lot more money in this current financial year. Uh but with the way the decisions are being made, a lot of that spend might roll over into next financial year. Um and then there's that separate piece of money that would be around um a digital requirement to be able to um bring organisations together effectively. Um so the six, so that four point two four figure would be um would cover TCC's share of the six million dollar transition costs that we're estimating at the moment across between now and go-live date.
Okay.
I think the other thing to be conscious of is we haven't done this before. Um it's not like there's somewhere you can go to and say, what did it cost us last time? You can't measure it and say it's this many square metres, there's this many dollars a square metre. So um we've done our best to create work stream plans of what we think might be the work involved, understanding legislative, what we need to do and understanding what it might be to set up an entity like this. Um but it is still an estimate based on our best assessment of of what the work would look like, but um it may end up being, it will, it it, you know, that number will never be right. Um and as we work through, we will provide updates, but it is our best estimate at this point in time.
Yeah, sorry, I'm I'm just, that confused me a little bit. Um so, because because the six point one here, I'm a six point one total. So is the six point one our share or is the six point one the total and the four point two? But then where does the one point nine go?
Um that's just a coincidence that the numbers have come out the same. So the four point two is this current financial year and then the one point nine is for the uh next financial year. Uh so you can see we were intending on or anticipating a larger spend in the first financial year and a lower spend um following that as you stand the organisation up. So it so happens that the two are very similar numbers. But rest assured, the spend for transition is a shared cost between the um TCC and its partners.
But the six point one budgeted and expected from TCC and that's our share, not. So the four point two is part of the six point one in the first year.
Yep.
And and then the, so the total was from from TCC's share is about six point one.
Correct.
Yeah, okay, no, that's
As the budget stands at the moment, yeah.
Yeah, no, that's that's fine. And the same question around the three point five Waters digital budget and and I understand these are all high level, but that is our share of the total or that's the total for we expect for digital?
Uh no, that's correct. That would um again, that budget was formed some time ago. Um since then, of course, we've made progress with um discussing around um a shared investment, not just with us and um any partner councils, but also with um other um potential water organisations as well.
Yep.
So the three and a half is the TCC money that we had budgeted, but the um other, our partners also have budget in place.
Okay, no, that's great, thank you. And then uh the other question, just to follow up on on what we had, there's the uh, I think it was twenty eight million dollars, so I can't find it quickly. Um uh is the the twenty eight million in allocations um potentially that that are gonna disappear with the Waters? Can we um just have a little bit of a comment on that?
So so the twenty eight million was the the estimated figure in that in that year of the allocated um activities and recovering activities of council, what they spend. So when we modelled the CCO, we modelled it spending twenty eight million. Um but when, but not all of that will just be a straight lift and shift from TCC to the CCO. There'll be a part of it that you can't lift and shift because uh the cost of the executive, the cost of governance um would not be lifted and shifted into the CCO, they'll have their own exec, their own governance. Um and there were sort of aspects of some other activities that were like that, so that came to uh that amount of money that in the first year would be nine million. The reason we didn't monitor that nine million continuing is because there would be an expectation that you right-size the organisation in some ways to bring down that nine million over time. So there's not left with a very high overhead.
So just to be clear, twenty eight million at the moment is allocated to Waters effectively and nine million of that is potentially stranded overhead in that first year, yeah.
Correct.
Okay, thank you. No, that's clears up that point for me, thank you. Deputy Mayor.
Um so just, I guess the um there was a suggestion at the beginning that that the papers do provide um all the financials that we need. I'm still struggling, we've got a few emails, so it's just um yeah, sorry if I'm um getting to where I'm needing to get to, but um a question for you, Marty, the, so we're gonna, if we're looking at a um I think when we did the consultation, thirty five percent of um people's rates went on water. Um so as the CEO of a, what's left of TCC, um with a council-controlled organisation reporting directly to council, how are you feeling about that organisation? What does that mean for, you must be looking to say, crikey, I've got a quite a big organisation that I've led until now, moving away um under an elected board that you as CEO won't participate in who's elected. Where really, we want to make sure that um you know, we're trying to support a positive culture in TCC and that's because we are, you know, looking after the people of Toronga, so can I get your view as our CEO? What does that mean from in your role and in terms of splitting teams up, having people over there, um questions on water, not actually coming back through your team because they're gonna be going somewhere else? How are you feeling with all of that in terms of your leadership role?
Uh thank, thank you for the question. So just in terms of numbers, uh let let's say the new water entity uh requires about a hundred and thirty to a hundred and fifty staff to transfer from our organisation to the CCO, so that's slightly more than ten percent of the organisation, so it still leaves a uh a, you know, a very large organisation to continue to deliver a range of other services. And and the creation of CCO, essentially it just creates another dynamic that we need to work with to, in order to deliver services to the community and so uh very similar to BVL as a large organisation delivering a range of services on behalf of, if you like, the wider council family and so this would just be another similar dynamic to that.
And just, sorry, on the communication side, again, we are trying to make sure that conversations from our people come through triaged well, you, I think you're proud of what you know, bringing them in-house into ninety Devonport. How are you seeing reports of water issues being managed in what's your new, what's your smaller team versus current state?
Uh look, it's probably getting into a level of detail that hasn't been decided yet, but we operate a a call centre, for example, that runs three hundred and sixty five days a year, twenty four hours a day, and so I'd suggest if um if if people have a water problem under the new model, that they'd call a very similar number and we'd manage those those issues just as we do now. And so likewise, we've just obviously built and moved into a new building and um sort of it would be my expectation uh by agreement that the new water entity would remain in this building as well. And so I think we'd attempt to do as much as we could to continue, I think, not just the formal relationships and processes, but also the informal opportunities by co-location and that sort of thing.
Councillor Schola.
Thank you, you wish it. Um just uh Chris, uh Deputy uh Mayor's question earlier, Christine didn't quite have the answer, but I just going back to the um the preferred options um that were in our deliberations back in May, and the Waters have done well, there were two, there was a submissions and there was an online survey. So yeah, Deputy Mayor is correct, forty two percent multi-council standalone water service organisation, nineteen percent in-house, thirty nine. And then the preferred option through the survey, multi-council thirty nine, standalone thirty three, in-house twenty eight. So combining those two, um all up seven hundred and thirty people, forty one percent for a multi-council um organisation, standalone organisation twenty three percent and in-house thirty six. So however you cut it, you're at two to five percent difference. Um but the question I was gonna ask and it follows on from my uh one to the DIA, on eighty uh paragraph eighty three, under legal implications and risks, um eighty two talks about governance risk. I'll just read this, however, this is, uh so if we do not uh we can continue to develop a water services delivery plan based on the council's preferred model to date, which is the multi-council um water service organisation. However, if this hi- uh this is a high-risk approach, if we do not do this, as the council uh the council takes this approach and chooses a different service delivery model as of today, there would be a significant risk of council being unable to complete and submit an approved water services delivery plan by the third of September, twenty twenty five. Can you just outline a bit about, you know, just the significance of that and and how um
So what we've done is we've broken it into two parts now, so and we have a timeframe which we think is achievable if the council does make a decision today. If it doesn't make a decision today, then it is getting difficult. So what we're proposing is you make a decision today on your water services delivery model. We have uh the information ready to go on a water services delivery plan. We've done it on an assumed basis of the three, but we can the way we've prepared our work is we can quite relatively quickly change that. And then we would bring that back for a decision on the twelfth of August. Uh and there's already a council meeting scheduled to do that. The the reason that gives us a a little bit of time, if you want to make any further changes, to make those changes before it's actually submitted on the third of September. So we we are getting pretty finely cut now though, if you don't make decisions, um we will have to add additional council meetings in, which is possible. But it is getting more difficult.
Is there any other questions to staff on either of these reports? Councillor Crowther.
You just, um in terms of the um the debt, um going back to that, my little um commentary earlier, that when you compare us to Western Bay Pleney District Council, the projected figures show that we currently have about two and a half times the debt for our Waters, which is um kind of, you know, roughly comparable to the difference in our population. And by FY thirty fourth, financial year thirty four, we will have um around six point seven times. So I'm just, I know you've answered those prior questions on it. Um I'm just thinking, do we have any kind of um constraints or um affordability analysis for future generations or sustainability analysis that gives us a sort of an upper limit guideline? Because having scanned around uh New Zealand councils, that is an extraordinary you know, increase in debt, an extraordinary amount of debt, and as I've said, we're the most indebted already and Waters is a significant part of that. So are there any, you know, sort of objective measures or even subjective measures that council uses to sort of constrain debt in any way when you analyse this?
Perhaps give a slightly higher level answer and then Catherine might be, I will be able to respond to the specifics. So I think um under any scenario, the council has an opportunity to influence or or direct to some extent the level of capital investment. Capital investment is the key driver for debt, so you can do that through, if it's in a CCO, through your statements of expectations, et cetera. But um uh as we talked about earlier, the world of water is changing, under the local waters done well legislation, and the the regulator um will be dealing with economic matters of pricing and pricing is directly related to debt and FFO. And the water regulator will be making sure that you're making an appropriate investment in infrastructure to meet um the the safety and the quantity needs of your community. So there, those are going to be some of the key drivers for how much investment you need to make and therefore what your debt levels are. And those regulators are applied regardless of the service delivery model that you use. So I think that's probably the overarching thing that you'd be need to think about and it is a different circumstance than what we currently have when we have none of that economic or water quality, quantity, investment, regulation um oversight across us. And so if we look at what happens internationally, both in Australia and in the UK, which um a few of us have been able to have a look at those models, the regulator is very active um and sets some very clear directives for organisations in terms of the levels of investment and what outcomes are expected. So I think just keeping bearing in mind that that context is quite different from what we have now.
Okay, is there any other questions for staff? We're out of questions, are we? That's good. Um well, uh thank you for that. Uh I I suggest before we uh move into uh any discussion and and I think how I'd like to approach this is uh is allow some discussion um before we we sort of head in a direction because uh as we've said, this is a is a big decision and and I think there's a lot to discuss uh prior to um deciding on on the the route of uh travel. So uh I thi- I think we should just take a uh take a break. Um and and we'll come back uh at ten past uh eleven and uh we will, we will start uh with with that discussion if finds agreeable. So adjourning till uh eleven ten, thank you.
Two eleven point three, both of local waters done well. I think what we might do is if we just deal with eleven point two. And there is a motion there that the council receives the report local waters done well preferred delivery model update report. It's just receiving a report, so we'll we'll just deal with that part now. And then we can we can continue to discuss eleven point three and that's got the the chunky decisions around where we go. So I'm I'm happy to move that recommendation that we received a report for eleven point two. Councillor Baker, thank you. Is there any discussion on that report? Yeah, councillor.
Just quickly, just a big thanks to the organisation and all the members of our community involved in the real last minute makeshift community hui and mana finua hui that we had. It was good to see, good turnout, honest discussions and questions before getting to today.
Thank you. Now I'll just put that, oh sorry, yeah councillor Carrera.
Yeah, I think it'd be helpful just in terms of the public, just to be really clear around the sort of timing of different engagement with Thames Coramandal Council at different times and just to basically to make it a bit clearer around at what point engagement started happening with staff, what point it started happening with elected members, what point it started happening officially with the chief executives, which I think Christine had clarified previously that that, or I think Jeremy had on twenty ninth of April or something. But I think I think that sort of timeline would help to get rid of what has actually been a bit of a discussion in the community that I've tried to clarify and probably failed on. So I think the more we can just put out just basic facts, doesn't have to get into any any details of it, but I yeah, concur with the previous comments that it's, I think we've approached it well, once we got to that position and had had some engagement again. Yeah, thank you. Yeah, probably an action, suggesting an action around that, just just to sort of, as part of the comms around it. I don't know if it has to be a proactive communication, but something on our website just to to clarify it for anyone who's still bewildered by it all.
All right, thank you. Any further discussion? Therefore, put the motion, receiving the report local waters done well preferred delivery model update report. Ask those all in favour, those against. That is carried, thank you. So now we will deal with eleven point three, and this is really deciding on on our direction of travel as to how we want to how we want to deal with with local waters and and the water services delivery. So we have some alternative recommendations that we'll hold back for now, but we we will put up. And it effectively is is stepping through the different options as we go, so that that we can, you know, I know there's there's a split around the table around how people view different aspects of it. And and so that's that's really the the proposed direction that we'll we'll go if if people are supportive of of that. But what I want to do is is really just open the floor to to anyone that that wants to discuss or 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 debate or talk about, you know, some of their ideas and and some of their concerns or or, you know, the the direction of travel that that we believe we should go in. And then we will, you know, put some of these resolutions up and and see if we can get to a a consensus and a decision. Does anyone want to offer their thoughts first? Councillor Morris.
I'll have a go. Thank you for the invitation, your worship. And it just relates really to the wider Bay of Plenty context. Whatever decision we make today, I think it's really important that we reach out to our colleagues across the Bay of Plenty. Change is not easy, but I think both the red team and the blue team in Parliament have made it clear over successive governments that change is coming. And so it's my personal view that when that change comes, we may have little control. Under the current pathway, we have some control, but as change rolls out across our region, I think it's better that we collectively, as councils, as equals, help shape that change for the people of our region, rather than have that change imposed upon us from Wellington. So I think that it's better to have the blue in gold, the Bay of Plenty, rather than the blue and red from Wellington dictating the future of the Bay of Plenty province and and other partners. So that would be my only comment, is that whatever decision we get to today, that we approach our our colleagues throughout the rest of the region, not not in any way as they might fear in some sort of hostile takeover kind of, if I'm using commercial terms, but in a partnership as equals. Each council with its own mana and really approach the future of Bay of Plenty waters together as a as a region, as a region of equals.
Thank you councillor Morrison, very much agree with those sentiments. Councillor Shawler.
Yes, well said councillor Morrison, love the reference to the blue and gold, baywide and baywaters. So yeah, I'll reiterate those comments as well. I think the decisions we have in front of us, we are at this stage in control of that to a degree, and certainly when we're looking at the longer term future of waters delivery across this region. So what is the the best way to position us and other local councils, other councils to get the best value for their water services, turning on taps, rainwater, stormwater, whatever it ends up looking like, certainly a proactive and positive and collaborative way forward. So I too would love to see what come out of today, is that we do reach out to our other Bay of Plenty partners in this, because it is a it's a thing for the future of of this region.
Councillor Carrera.
Yes, I find myself in full agreement with both my colleagues on either side. And I think it is important we look at the regional context, the fact that we may or may not have regional councils by 2028, if we listen to statements by key ministers and the prime minister. If that's followed through on, we will have a different landscape, different functions, different roles for different organisations. We don't know that yet. One thing I did want to bring up is, and it's, I guess it's been slowly sort of coming to the surface of my mind, is ring fencing. And the more I've looked at it, and particularly with looking at the numbers we got given last evening, the more I think we have to really rethink that. Now, I don't know if we have enough information to make a formal resolution or anything, but either way, I understand there'll be an alternative resolution put forward at the appropriate time. But whichever option we go with today, we'll be heading towards a multi-council CCO arrangement. And if we look at the example with Western Bay and Thames Coramandal District Council as one of the potential combos, that we currently have the lowest charges and we currently have the highest debt. We're planning to have the highest charges per per customer we're talking about, and we're planning to have a far, far bigger increase in debt. So the question in my mind is, you know, yes, there are equity issues that might be actually, you know, I could support ring fencing for sure, there are grounds to do that, we want to protect the interests of Western Bay people and potentially other people across the Bay of Plenty. But I think we also need to look at it from the other point of view, which is, do we need to also look at the interests of Taarranga people? And they would be worse off by ring fencing from everything I've read. So why are we the ones who are taking, you know, leading the charge on that? Are we confident we're doing the right thing by doing that? Because ultimately, as I just pointed out before in one of my questions, the debt, this burden on Taarranga ratepayers will massively increase compared to to the Western Bay District Council. So if we do end up going with Western Bay alone, you know, then we're talking, we would have, you know, heading towards three, a threefold increase in the per capita debt ratio between us and them. It's already higher, but it will be even higher, significantly higher. And so so I guess it's a question to my colleagues, is irrespective of where we end up on this today, where are we at with ring fencing? And, you know, how will that feed into those conversations?
Thank you, Midnight. This is one of these decisions that's going to live with us for for quite some time as a council. It is a big step forward, not only for Taarranga City Council, but for the wider bay region, and I do like the reference to the blue and gold. It's positioning us, that this is the region for improved and more efficient growth going forward. We've got growth issues, we need more infrastructure, we need to find better, more efficient ways of paying for it. And this is one way, I'm not saying it's yoni, but it is a way that we can progress going forward. Now, from a point of view of discussing things in a very harmonious way with potential partners, I think ring fencing and keeping our debt to ourselves for as long as we can will remove the risk and burden from our partners going forward. They don't want to be exposed to our debt, and like we don't want to be exposed to their issues until we've got how we're going to work together sorted out, how we're going to plan our future, how we're going to harmonise our growth, how we're going to perform better from a growth perspective. Where are we going to grow? Do we align with a smart growth plan for us in Western Bay, for example, on housing growth, or do we rewrite that and have a whole new plan for growth? How are we going to work together as councils to meet the growth demands for the future? And then that's going to determine how we're going to try and pay for everything. But going in from the start and removing something or adding something is, in my view, poor. We need to leave everything open for discussion between elected members of all the respective councils that we will be talking to. And hopefully, with us as the elected representatives of Taarranga, talking to the duly-elected representatives of other councils, we can come to an agreement, formulate a way forward, keep the discussion very open and broad, cordial, and we can find a pathway to improve the growth in the bay region.
Councillor Carrera.
I think in terms of generally where this council should head, it should be in the direction expressed by my fellow members earlier, in terms of being more collegial and and not being seen as the big brother, bossy big brother, to say that this is who we're wanting to work with. We just want to have the approach that, hey, we're open to talk to our fellow Bay of Plenty councils, in a in a very meaningful way, in terms of identifying, you know, their issues and how we can work together to 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 form a CCO that is beneficial, mutually beneficial. And that is actually the the intent of the legislation or the bill that's currently there. So I think that's fairly critical, and we have been distributed some alternative resolutions around that. It's about that approach, and I think it's pretty critical, you know, to be collegial and honest and open and accommodating, and not to be seen as being the big brother, wanting to, you know, dictate. Yeah, so I look forward to those resolutions being discussed and that way forward, and hopefully we'll come to a, well, hopefully unanimous decision around that approach.
Councillor Baker.
I tautukona tenuinga o korero ko fariki here. I support a lot of the the corerero that has been shared so far. Unity is important within our region, and how we go about our leadership in this space is equally important. There's a time to lead from the front, there's a time to lead from behind. But for me, with this conversation, I think leadership looks like standing side by side with our fellow councillors across the region, as others have already mentioned. And that's, I feel like, is an important approach that we take. Something else that's also really important to me is how we take Taarranga, our people, along this journey and this next phase to when we get to the next, you know, big kind of milestone. There's a lot of mistrust, there's a lot of accusations around lack of transparency and all those sorts of things. And, you know, as we go through this next critical phase around due diligence, wherever we land, it's a really great way for us to improve in some of those factors that matter to our people through more enhanced engagement mechanisms. Yeah, and it adds another another layer of safety if we were to better include our people into those, into this next period of time. So I think that's equally important as well, and something that I know will resonate across the region too, is the actual, is the wellbeing of our our water. And so one of the big drivers for me into this next period will be ensuring that Taarranga o te wai, the wellbeing of our our wai, our waterways, and its journey from beginning to end is central to the decisions that we make. Because whilst, you know, we hear that our future generations will, you know, the risk of there is that they inherit masses amounts of debt, a real risk too is that they will inherit, well, not a risk, but the reality is they will inherit what we leave behind in terms of the wellbeing of the water as well. So it's important that we take care with our wai moving forward.
Councillor Rollaston.
Tena kautau aha ko haere a te rangatira ahokapa hakopa emi kauana ki a kia kua. So I just wanted to acknowledge the mana finua representation that we're here, and to, to, I guess, to tautukor, some of the mahi that's gone on before, so I just want to mahi. Pretty much similar vein, some words that were coming up in my head were ata haere, let's go, but just dot the i's and cross the t's, go with caution towards this bigger, I guess, entity. I think there's general consensus of the out, the place we want to get to, there might be different variations on how we get there, so it's sort of, and tautukor, hotapu's corerero about, you know, he waka ekino, we've got to bring the people on this waka with us. And probably, I think in the last six weeks, we have done a lot of work to bring the iwi with us on this journey, but we've also been communicated that there's more to do. So I think whichever way we go, and of course, the community that we serve as well. So, you know, this kotahi tanga kaupapa of this partnership of bringing it together, making sure whichever more how we get there, that we ensure we take those along with us on this. I think it's fair to say that it has definitely lifted the intensity and interest of our iwi, tautukor. There's two things here, is it better value for our ratepayers and is it better value for our resources? And that's the why. And we hear this phrase mokupuna decisions, so who's going to pay for it? Is it going to be value for money, so to speak? And is our resource going to be in the best condition that it that it can be, whichever way we choose? So I just wanted to probably support a lot of the corerero that's gone along, but my sort of view is we've got to go with caution, because if we race, we risk losing people on the journey, and that's definitely not what we want to do. Kiala.
Councillor Taylor.
Definitely agree with a lot of what's been said, certainly about the region. I think it's been discussed that this is probably the biggest decision we will make in our term, and the reach it has is way into the future, I think Emi's just indicated, it'll it'll be our grandchildren that are affected by this. So it is a big decision. I look at the journey we've been on since November last year. I think we've done a good job of talking to the public on a complex subject. We haven't been afraid to turn the bus around and go back and pick up people that we maybe dropped off on the way, so I think that that's been good. In my way of looking at this, the decision we make today is only the start. We're about to build a vehicle that is going to provide these services to our city and the region for the next 20, 30 years. We need to get that design 100% correct. There's a lot of things I think are still up in the air, and we should be able to have input into that as we go forward over the next two years. And I really think that's the crucial point from here, is just to make sure that we make good decisions during the due diligence process, which will, no matter which partners we end up with, it's how we go through that process that's going to be important.
Yeah, thank you for that discussion, and and agree with a number of things that have been said around this table. Look, for for me, you know, when when we've looked at this for about the last nine months, and, you know, there's there's there seems to to me to be a very clear favourite in in my mind, and and that is that is working as a multi-council CCO, and we've heard that today around some of that discussion around the region and, you know, trying to to work together with with a wider group. And I think that's, you know, very encouraging that that we've got that. I absolutely agree with councillor Taylor as well around, you know, we need to get this right from here, because this is the start of a journey. It's making a decision as to to which direction we headed. And for me, you know, why why is there a favourite? You know, because at the end of the day, the 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 best option is that that looks after our people. And all the modelling that we've seen has been very clear in the direction that that a CCO is the cheapest option, and a multi-council CCO is is, you know, slightly better than than a in-house, oh sorry, a single council CCO. And, you know, we're talking quite big numbers, you know, $200 million difference over over a period of 10 years. You know, it's it's not, we're not saying it's it's going to save you $5 a year or anything like that, that's that's quite a significant change, it's, you know, around 10% per connection. And I think if we look at our rates this year and we, the difference between a 10% rise and a 0% rise is is huge, and I think our people would have really appreciated that. And, you know, water to me is is very important, but what people really care about is turning on their tap, getting fresh, clean, safe water out of the tap, flushing the toilet, and knowing that your water is being dealt with in a in a environmentally safe way, and and that, you know, that that we're looking after all that 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 waste. And, you know, if if people can pay less for that, I think that's a win for for everyone. Look, I I I think this delay has been really beneficial in the last few weeks, and, you know, we've learnt from that as well, around taking our our people with us. And, you know, I thank everyone for that's engaged with us, that that came out to our events, because it was it was really beneficial, you know, from from both our communities' perspective, being able to inform them around, you know, what was happening and and what we're we're doing, as well as, you know, engaging with mana finua. And I think we've we've learnt from from that around, you know, and and some of the the recommendations today, I think, is is to acknowledge some of that that discussion that we've had, and and making sure that we we do this better in the future. For me, again, you know, it's it's a no-brainer around Western Bay being our our partner. We share, we share services at the moment. It's it's something that that I think is is, you know, just just should should happen. You know, there's there's a lot of, a lot of, you know, scale and and working together is is going to going to be better for for both parties. Look, I'm I'm very open to to Thames Coramandal as well. I think, you know, the the more people we can work with, and and then obviously the bay, and and obviously the bay, other councils are are a step behind at the moment, but, you know, they've showed a willingness to to work towards a a multi-council CCO, and I think we should continue to engage and and see if we can go on the on the journey together. So so that's, you know, pretty much, I I guess, how I I see this, and and I've been very clear, I guess, throughout, you know, that that is the direction of travel. That's not to say I'm set on this. You know, if if we go into due diligence and we find a a different way, then, you know, I'm I'm very happy to to pivot. And and as as to councillor Taylor's, you know, that's the key thing now, is is getting this process from here and getting an organisation that that actually serves our people the best. And and hopefully, that can can be bigger and take some of the the, you know, our partnering or or our close neighbours with us on on that journey. And I think that is that is around that that leadership that councillor Baker talked about as well. And, you know, I think my my personal view is, you know, we should, we should start on this journey, and and, you know, we should, we should continue to engage and and people and and take our, you know, our our potential partners with us on on the on the journey. But I think, you know, we do have a a leadership role in in the Bay of Plenty, and and to our other partners to play, being the biggest. And I think, you know, that's something that that I agree with councillor Morris. And, you know, if, if people can pay less for that, um, I think that's a win for, for everyone. Uh, look, I, I, I think, uh, this delay has been, uh, really beneficial, um, in the last few weeks. And, you know, we've learnt from that as well around taking our, our people with us. Uh, and, you know, I thank everyone for, that's engaged with us, um, that, that came out to our events, um, because it was, it was really beneficial, uh, you know, from, from both our community's perspective, um, being able to inform them around, you know, what was happening and, and what we're, we're doing, uh, as well as, uh, you know, engaging with Mana Fenua. And I think we've, we've learnt from, from that, uh, around, um, you know, and, and some of the, the, uh, recommendations today, I think, is, is to acknowledge, um, some of that, that, uh, discussion that we've had, uh, and, and making sure that we, we do this better, uh, in the future. Uh, for me, again, you know, it's, it's a no-brainer around Western Bay being our, our partner. Uh, we share, we share services at the moment. It's, uh, it's something that, that I think is, is, um, you know, just, just should, should happen. Uh, you know, there's, there's a lot of, uh, um, a lot of, you know, uh, scale and, and, uh, working together is, is gonna, gonna be better for, for both parties. Uh, look, I'm, I'm very open to, to Thames Coromandel, um, as well. I think, you know, the, the, the more people we can work with and, and then obviously the Bay. And, and obviously the Bay, uh, other councils are, are a, a step behind at the moment. Um, but, you know, they've, they've showed a willingness to, to work towards a, a multi-council CCO. And I, I think we should continue to engage and, uh, and see if we can, uh, go on the, on the journey together. So, so that's, uh, you know, pretty much, I, I guess, how I, I see this. And, and I've been very clear, I guess, throughout, uh, you know, that, that is the direction of travel. That's not to say I'm set on this. Um, you know, if, if we go into due diligence and we find a, a different way, um, then, you know, I'm, I'm very happy to, to pivot. And, and as, as to councillor Taylor's, uh, you know, that's the key thing now is, is getting this process from here and getting an organisation that, that actually serves our people the best. Uh, and, and hopefully, um, that can, can be bigger and take some of the, the, uh, you know, our partnering or, or our, uh, close neighbours, um, with us on, on that journey. And I think that is, that is around that, that leadership that councillor Baker talked about as well. And, um, you know, I, I think my, my personal view is, uh, you know, we should, we should start on this journey. Um, and, and, you know, we should, we should continue to engage and, and, uh, people and, and take our, um, you know, our, our potential partners, uh, with us on, on the, uh, on the journey. But I think, you know, we, we do have a, a leadership role in, in the Bay of Plenty. Um, and, and to, uh, our other partners, uh, to play, um, being the biggest. And I think, you know, that's something that, that, I agree with councillor Morris. We've, we've got to, uh, you know, not use that as, as an, as our, I guess, advantage or, um, not use it, uh, in, in the wrong way. It's, it's, um, you know, just, just saying, look, we, we do want to part, partner with you for the good of all of us, that mutually beneficial, uh, partnership, which is what we've, we had in a resolution from December. So, you know, it's, it's, it hasn't ever, ever sort of wavered, uh, from that. Um, I agree around some of that ring fencing. I, I think, I think it's the, the right way to go. We've already heard, uh, from other councils around, you know, that is the, the one thing they're most scared about is, is our debt. Now, I'm, I'm not scared of our debt, uh, because it shows, it shows the investment that we've actually done in our waters. We should be scared of those without any debt, um, because that potentially means that, that, uh, they haven't invested, uh, to the same level, um, that, that we have. So, you know, I think the ring fencing takes away some of that worry, uh, and, and I think is, is a positive, um, overall. But that is, uh, that's my thoughts and deputy mayor.
Um, thanks, Mayor Mahi. I, I think around the table, we've heard some really positive words about the journey we're on and the journey we're about to take. I go back to a couple of things that, um, I believe I have felt from the start in terms of what I need to make decisions. And I think, um, that's absolutely robust financial analysis. And I thank the staff for, um, numerous emails and reporting that, um, attempts to get us on to the same page in terms of what the financials mean, what the modelling means. Um, but I have to acknowledge that I'm not quite there. I heard today, DIA said there's quite a lot of water to flow under the bridge. Um, Catherine saying these numbers are at a very high level. Uh, we know that there's a significant work programme or programme of work, but we don't know what that really means. Uh, we've talked about six million of costs, but we can't be held to that because that's not really being, um, budgeted. We know, the other side of what I want to always make sure of, I do before we start, is to take the people along. And we acknowledge that we screwed up. We didn't take iwi along in our decisions and we've gone back and we've done, I think, um, I think it's really good, um, the positive interactions being had. But it's not just iwi, we need to take all the people along. And I think it's a, yes, we know, um, water can be put into, you know, like, we want the tap to turn and the loo to flush, but we also need to let people know that we are setting something up for a future. We also know that we've got council, local council election shortly. We've got, um, central government next year. Um, there's a lot of change that can, can happen. And, um, even where Mahi and Rod, sorry, the mayor and councillor Taylor have said we need to get it right. Are we sure we're in a position right now to get it right? I don't doubt that we are heading towards a, whatever we're going to call, a multi-council CCO. But if we are assimilating or amalgamating or not having a regional council, it might not be called that in the future. Um, and I believe bigger is, is probably going to be better for that. But I'm just not in a hurry to make those changes right now. And I think in terms of, there's so much that's still not yet decided, not yet clear. And I'm really confident that around this table, we can get that clarity and get that confidence in the decisions we make so that we are making, making it, making the right decision. DIA said just now that they are, TCC is in a strong position as a standalone, in a strong position as a single, um, council CCO, but talked about the benefits of joint council CCO. And I think I'm comfortable that those, those do exist, but I'm also, but I'm uncomfortable that I know, I personally know enough right now about the financials, about what it's going to cost. We really want to work on having a council that's more efficient. And we've suddenly got this whole new block of overheads that we don't know where it's quite going to sit. And I'm not comfortable with that because we have worked so hard already to take out some of the overheads we don't need in the business to keep our, um, rates down. And I just think we are, we're not quite there and we need to keep the foot on the pump in terms of efficiency and doing things well. Um, I also think we need to be really careful about where decisions are made because I want major decisions about the shareholder agreement and the commitment agreement, um, and whether we have a clause on privatisation, um, to come back to this table. And I think we need to make sure that those sort of things are put in place as well. So for me, I appreciate the amount of, um, time and effort that has been put in by, um, by staff and the team and the people of Toronga. Um, appreciate the feedback we've got, but, um, and I believe that I'm, my view is similar to everyone's in terms of where we might need to be in three years. But I'm not quite comfortable that we know enough, I know enough, um, to say, yes, let's do it. And I think across councils in the region, we absolutely want to be with them. And I've looked at what Rotorua has resolved, um, and I, I'm aware of other conversations that are happening. And I want to be, as councillor Baker said, standing alongside them, not necessarily leading the way. And we can in terms of our knowledge, um, but I want to be stepping through this as one of a number of councils in the Bay of Plenty, um, that is taking the right time doing. I want to do due diligence on us and the decisions we're making before I step out and say, I'd like to hold hands with somebody, um, and with another council.
All right, thank you. Um, so I think, uh, everyone's had, had a discussion and I think, uh, hopefully that has helped people, uh, sort of feel, uh, uh, feel out where, where other people are, uh, lying. Now, um, what I suggest is, is we've now got a few options. Uh, and the, the first part of this, uh, is receiving the report. Uh, and then we have a, a, uh, a recommended, uh, resolution around, um, the Tonga de Fenua position paper. Uh, so I'd just like to look at that. So I think, um, what we should do is, is, uh, kind of look, take, take some of these in, in parts. Um, and, and we can, you know, discuss, uh, what we've heard. So this part is, is obviously receiving, uh, the report. And the second part is, uh, from, um, Tonga de Fenua's position. Uh, and this is, this is to do with, with some of the discussions we've had over the, um, over the, the past few weeks. So, so this very much acknowledges, uh, what, uh, what we have heard and, and gives a commitment, um, that we will, will continue to, uh, to work with them and take them, take them on the, the journey with us along this. And, and I just want to say a thank you, uh, very much for, uh, coming together in, in such a short space of time and, and giving us, um, you know, quite a clear, uh, direction on, on their views. And, and I think that's, that's been, uh, very helpful to us and, and really appreciate them. I think understanding, uh, our position as well, uh, which is, um, that, that we've got to, to, uh, take into account their, their, uh, their views and, and obviously consider those and, and very much around that partnership. Uh, but on the, the flip side, that we're, we're also making a decision, uh, which is in the best interests of, of the wider Toronga. And, um, you know, that, that they understand that and, and they just want to be involved and, and ultimately want the, the same, uh, outcome, which is, is what's in the, the best for all of us. Um, and looking after, you know, their, their Tonga and their, their, uh, you know, what, what they consider to be very important to them, uh, which is, which is that whole catchment, um, and looking at it as a, as a whole catchment. So, uh, that's, that's the, the first part of this. Um, and, and I'm, I'm happy to take, uh, a, if it's, if it's a, a mover and second for, for this part of, of the resolution. Um, and we can have any discussion that, that people want on this part. And then we'll, um, we'll move on to, to making some, some more recommendations. Yep, uh, councillor Rollaston will move. Yeah, councillor Crowther, second. Uh, is there any discussion on this?
Um, again, just recognising the short, uh, timeframe and acknowledging Tonga de Fenua that came together on this matter, um, especially those that were shoulder tapped to get under the hood. Uh, Spencer and Ben in particular, um, that have worked, uh, quickly and expeditiously to get a, get a response back to, uh, council. Want to also acknowledge the relationship that, um, has been built and continues to exist with Tarangapu. Um, and those are areas that we all want to make sure that we, uh, preserve respectfully as we go along, uh, along, um, this, this process. But I think, uh, like anything, when you go through these robust processes, you understand how strong your relationship is. Um, I want to acknowledge, uh, TCC and the staff that have built those relationships over a long period of time. That allowed this, uh, I guess, important kopapa to be worked through in a very mana-enhancing way. Um, it had the opportunity to, uh, be very challenging. Uh, it has in different ways been challenging, but it's been done in a very respectful way. So I really want to acknowledge the, um, you can lean back on relationships in challenging times. Um, and those relationships have been built and I think it shows the respect of, that's been built. Um, it sort of, uh, dawns on me that I'm sitting here and the tariti's just been put on the wall behind me. Um, and acknowledging, uh, that was one of the first requirements that they have responded to. So, um, don't do these things unless you really respect them. It's probably, um, and those that have been in this chamber or the, the previous chamber will know some of those, uh, actions that have caused that. So I just wanted to just respectfully acknowledge the, the relationships and definitely the, the, uh, the iwi, the hapu that have came to, come to the table in a manner, uh, befitting of the mana that they, um, uphold in, in Toronga Moana, kewra.
Councillor Crowther.
Yeah, I would just add to that, I think, um, councillor Rollaston summed it up well. Um, from, from my perspective, I think it was an incredibly helpful exercise to engage with our Mana Fenua. Um, I think it pointed for me a little bit to the gap that was there with the, um, engagement with the wider public. Um, and so I, I strongly acknowledge, um, the mayor's comments that, um, Mana Fenua are a key part of our communities. They're only part, and I think it'd be great to sort of step up the engagement with our wider communities as well. Um, I think in particular, I'd also acknowledge the, the depth of understanding that some of those people brought to our conversations. And I, I find that really helpful because I think we've sort of floated around the top of this in our wider community consultation. And, and I think it's helpful to get sort of stuck in and actually hear what people think about some of the details because ultimately that, you know, devil in the detail comment applies here, that there's a whole lot of fish hooks, um, that, that could happen in setting up a CCO. And I think the more we can be transparent and open and, um, certainly acknowledge the, the really helpful contribution. And hopefully we can, with this resolution, keep engaging, um, really thoroughly with, with our Tonga de Fenua, but also with our wider community.
Right, if there's no, no further discussion on this. If there's no further discussion, um, then I'm happy to put this part of the, uh, resolution to the council and ask all those in favour, uh, those against, uh, that is carried, thank you. Um, now I believe, uh, councillor Crowther may have a...
I'll, I'll hold, hold my, I think, um, someone else might have a resolution, I think.
Okay. Yep, councillor, um, deputy mayor's caller.
I've got a resolution that I would be comfortable to put up, if I may. The second one received, not the first. Sorry, we might, we won't have the letters correct.
Yeah, I think those letters are correct.
Are they?
Yeah.
Okay.
Just, well, we only need the one part at the moment, I think. Is it G, is that?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, so sorry, which part of this resolution are you? Are you proposing, deputy mayor?
I was proposing F and G. So this is...
Okay, we might just deal with these in two different parts because I think there's, um, two different issues here. So if, um, deputy mayor will move that, have we got a second, uh, for that? All right, um, deputy mayor, would you like to talk to that?
Thank you, Mayor Mahi. So we, this is acknowledging that, uh, we, I believe we are heading in a direction across the table that's, that's a rea, that's got a reasonably similar destination, but, um, it's the speed at which we are intending to get there. And it's about, we've talked a lot about doing due diligence on others. And I think we'd like, I'd like to do a little bit more due diligence to understand our own financial situation, um, in terms of what a new entity might look like. We are in a, quite a state of, um, there's quite a lot of change happening. It is a big decision, um, it's potentially a hundred and thirty people transferring to a new organisation. Now CEO talking about, well, hopefully they'll stay in this brand new building we've got. Um, but we haven't decided that. Hopefully the call centre will cover off that, but we haven't decided that, um, digital, we're not sure what digital services will support that model. I think we are in a situation where we've recognised that we haven't quite gotten, I've recognised I haven't quite got enough financial information right now. Um, and I like the support we've had from DIA and the team saying there's lots of work to do and I'd like to do a little bit more of that work, um, ourselves with the confidence that we know our systems, uh, we know the people that are managing our systems and we can therefore do that work, um, to prepare, um, for a, a future change. I think as well, just the whole concept that we need to take our people along is really important. And it's difficult to take the people along if you haven't got your clear messages about what you know, what you're not quite sure of, when we're looking at, um, what are our messages about increasing debt? Because I know when we consulted on the annual plan, there were quite a lot of people concerned we wanted to increase our debt. Is that the message that we wanted to share to our people and, and how are we justifying that? Yes, we've got a model that says, or three models that say, we'll be saving, um, money at a, um, on waters ten years' time. But we've also got this unknown that we might not be able to charge those water charges on a property value. So does that mean that... So does that mean that those that were paying quite a lot of water charges will be paying less, and therefore the people at the bottom will be paying more? There's lots of unknowns that I, I believe this option that allows us to take our time to prepare our financials, to better understand the risk, to get through the period of change of local government, to actually talk with, alongside the other councils in our region. Our mayor was open on TV1 News that we wanted to talk about an amalgamation across the region. Let's feed that into the conversation as well. Heading towards a joint CCO, heading, acknowledging that's government aspiration and we want to follow them, but the biggest thing the government has said to us is we need to make sure we've got financial sustainability. Am I sure that we've got it? If we do a CCO model today, no, I'm not. And as somebody that knows my numbers, I don't, I feel uncomfortable if I haven't feeling that, that financial sustainability, that I can say yes, a tick to that. So that's a government requirement and aspiration, and I feel that we do need to have a little bit more time, which this will allow us to do, to walk, to work towards a joint CCO in the future, and have time to make sure that we as elected members are comfortable with the decisions that we're going to have to be made, to make, comfortable with which decisions are going to come to us, and be part of the discussion, not just part of the approval process. So be more involved in how we develop the, what we need to do, that significant work programme towards a joint CCO into the future.
Thank you, yes, pretty much concur with the, the comments, and I think I did probably allude to them when the open, this open forum about just ata haire, let's just go with caution, go with humility as we go on this journey. The outcome that I want is, I think, is similar to everyone else wants, but how we get there is, is maybe different. So this to me allows more certainty. This is not just about the iwi, but if I, if I relate to the iwi, I think they have given us conditional caution around how we go along, that place that will make it a lot more palatable. But my, my support is this on balance, this is probably the, the pathway that will get us there without, well, we dot the i's and cross the t's on, I guess, without reiterating all the things that have gone on, on the stormwater and how that might be charged, some of the, the challenges with Thames Coramandel that have been pretty much open along the way. So I, yeah, that's, that's all I'll say at this point, thank you.
Councillor Roseboom.
Thanks, mayor. No, I do not support this current motion as it sits right now, it runs counter to what we consulted on for, for many months. Any, any mention around the community not being consulted, I think that's a bit of a falsehood. This has been on the public's landscape for over three years now, between the Labour Party and the current National Coalition, where it's been talked about at length, and I think it's suffering a wee bit from, it's just a constant story that's on the news, and people aren't keeping up with the narrative as it changes in some respects. The constant political cycle, we're currently on a three year cycle, every three years we have local body elections, then we have general elections, so that's going to be a constant impact on this transition as we work through it, it's not going to go away. We're currently in a local body election cycle right now, so our potential partner councils are going through this right now, and to some extent, they are fighting for their own political survival, so they're not going to say something that may lose them a vote, whether or not they personally agree with this process or not. Now, I'm, around this issue, I don't think we can get a true understanding of the impact on the individual water user until we start getting into the due diligence and really nailing down what are the definite, yes, I'm in favour of this from another council, or no, I am not in favour of that. We won't be able to draw a very good line between what's going to work and what is not, until we start having very frank discussions with our potential partners. So no, I do not support this motion.
Thank you, councillor Roseboom. Councillor Crowther.
Yeah, thank you, and thanks to everyone for, yeah, for working through this issue. I think it, it's obviously one we've got different views, but I, I agree with those comments earlier by a number of councillors, that we're, we're generally going in the, in the same direction. I probably speak as, probably, I would suspect maybe the biggest outlier who's still looking closely at the in-house model, but I can see, you know, collectively, we're all trying to get to that multi-council option, and I see big benefits if we can do it the right way, and have a Bay of Plenty focus to that. I'll make some brief comments on a number of points. One of them is this issue of, pardon me, debt and charges, because it is this thing that I think Catherine has helpfully described it as two levers that are connected, and we can pull on one or the other. Mahi, you, or your worship, you, you mentioned today, I'm not, I'm not scared of our debt, and you said last night, if we don't have a big debt, maybe we haven't invested enough in, you know, in waters. So I think we don't have any problem with that. I think our issue is the other direction. And, and I don't feel I'm scared of debt, I think the issue is we need to be prudent about debt, because it does impact on our future generations, and I take councillor Baker's point, it needs to be a balance, it needs to be investing in what we need. You did, yeah. But also being, being, doing that in the wisest way, and I'm actually looking at this and going, if our charges are the lowest with our comparable, with our prospective partners, do we need to up the charges a bit more than the multi-council CCO option? We haven't got that information, so I think getting that info is a big thing. The, the Thames Coramandel issue, I still liken it to an arranged marriage, because we've never sat down with our prospective partners, elected member to elected member, and actually figured out if we really want to go with that council. So to me, I don't want to, you know, kick them for touch or do anything like that, I want to say, be part of the discussions, but I can't commit to that now, it's just, especially in the light of what I've heard from, from our iwi, which, which also point to, apart from the relationship issues, the financial costs that could be imposed on councils, depending on how their resource consensus issues are resolved in future. Stormwater, just no from me for stormwater going into a CCO as things stand. We have to deal with the cards that have been played in front of us, and so it's a no on that. So I support this resolution. Fourth thing is, we're being asked to approve a CCO in the original resolution before the waters legislation has been passed, as we heard, before critical new planning legislation is finalised, before final decisions are made about developer levies. Now, developer levies are critical to getting our financial, to paying off our debt, otherwise our future, you know, our grandkids and mokupun are going to be paying for it, we need developers to pay their share, we don't know what that looks like. We don't know the future of regional councils, we don't know how often councils does, and we don't know what the whole structure's going to look like. So again, not the time. The fifth thing, our chief executive helpfully described how bringing city operations in-house would drive more efficiencies, give us more control, rather than the old model of having a Christchurch-based, actually, CCO delivering that. So we're told in-house is more efficient. Our mayor is saying we need fewer councils, I'm open to that idea, there's evidence both ways, but to save, to be efficient, save money. And now we're being asked in the original resolution to sign off on creating a whole new entity before doing our due diligence, which would actually scrap our really successful in-house waters model, probably the best part of this council over the last 20 years, 25 years, and to corporatise it, put $3 billion of assets in there, and to double the number of high-paid chief executives, to double the exec teams, to add new overheads, and to add a whole new layer of governance. And I'm not saying we won't want to end up doing that, but I'm like, to do that without the clear evidence around that, without seeing what, what it would look like in the CCO, but also what it would look like in the remaining council, and that's something the deputy mayor has raised. So I think this resolution addresses that, it doesn't cut away the goal, it doesn't do much in terms of timing. I think informally yesterday, when we were talking about this, it was acknowledged that this option, you know, give or take a few months, we're going to get to the same point. And this is about a long-term, big-picture decision. And I, I do concur with, noted down Mayor Tapsil's comments when Ruru took this approach, and said it will give council sufficient time to properly investigate the CCO option, engage with the community and iwi before a final decision about whether that is the most appropriate model. And we've heard we're in a good position, we've heard we've got options, and I see very little downside in this, and I see a great big upside. So I urge my colleagues to look at the big picture, look at the long term, and take this option.
Yeah, I, I don't support this. You know, this is just delaying something, you know, all, all the questions that have been asked today are exactly the questions that should be asked, and will be answered in due diligence. So, you know, this, we've been talking about this since November last year, we've consulted on this, we have worked with partner councils. Right now, potentially Western Bay of Plenty District Council are making a decision, you know, to, to work with us in a, in a multi-council CCO, and we're going to leave them hanging high and dry because we can't make a decision. So, look, I, I just think this is, you know, this is really short-sighted. If, if, you know, this, this is saying we're going towards a multi-council CCO, so let's make that decision and, and actually do it. You know, this is, this is the, the issue that this council has had for over the last 20 years. You know, it's, it's, you know, delaying, 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 until you have perfect information. We're never going to have perfect information, but what we are going to have if we make a decision today to go for a multi-council CCO, is an opportunity to do due diligence, where we will get all the information we need, and until we have that information, we don't have to commit to it. You know, there's on-ramps, there's off-ramps, but, you know, this is about regional leadership, and doing this is not leading at all, this is basically, well, councillor Kurak told me not to use this term, but it's kicking the can down the road. And, you know, it's, it's just, this is, this is the, the issue, this is something that I've been very hot on. You know, I, I actually want to deliver things, and, and, you know, there is a very clear pathway to delivering for our people, and that is cheaper water charges per connection over the next 10 years, and I, I want to get on and, and start delivering that. And, you know, I just, I, I can't, I can't understand, you know, some of the councillors' you know, views that, that this is, you know, just delaying, 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 is, is actually going to get us, you know, where we, we ultimately want to be. Yes, we can take our time, we've already said it's 2027 when we're, we're looking to deliver that, that gives us plenty of time to get under the hood, to, to really, you know, invite other councils in, work with Western Bay, work with Thames Coramandel, if that's the will of a room, and, and, you know, get the information that we need to, to be very clear. And as I've said before, I'm happy to take an off-ramp if, if the information doesn't stack up to, to where we want to go, but, you know, this, this I think is, is, you know, if, as I say, we've got Western Bay effectively, you know, making a decision, and, and we're just going to say, oh, you just hang in there, because, you know, they are a willing partner. We don't know whether any of these others are going to ever be willing partners, and so we might just delay and then, then go, oh, we're, we're back in the same situation, and in a year's time, we'll be making the same, the same decision. You know, this, this leads on to a water services delivery plan. I, I just, I just don't know how we can even deliver a water services delivery plan, you know, that, that has so much uncertainty, because we don't know who we're working with, we don't know when we're going to do this, we don't know who, who our, our partners are. So, you know, I, I think we should, you know, make a, make a, a decision today, and it's all subject to due diligence, that's where we find out the information that we need, and, and, you know, we're, we're headed in the direction that we, we need to be going. But, yeah, I, I don't support this. Councillor Baker.
Hi, ki'ora tato. Ano, um, this decision, and it's been referred to several times now, is a legacy decision for our city, it's a historical decision for our city, and an inter, an intra-generational decision. And if it means that we need to take our time as a council to make sure that we make that right decision, then I'm definitely for that, because like what's already been said, our kids and our mokos and our water sources will be inheriting the decisions that we make around this table today and into the future. So contrary to what my AI doll says, I probably disagree with you on this one, mahi. I genuinely respect the views around this table, and even getting to this point with our own council, who is that councillor's meetings that we've had, phone calls, emails, I've never felt like anyone's tried to, to lobby, so I do genuinely respect the, the things that have been shared. And despite waters being in the political cosmos as a discussion point for a few years now, under three waters and into now, I don't feel like our people are as informed as what they need to be for me to feel comfortable enough to, to make a decision on, on their behalf, let alone where I sit on this matter. So I support the, the courtidore from our deputy mayor and, and himy around taking it slow, doing it well, and doing it right. It delays the decision, but I don't know if it necessarily kicks it down, because we're, we're on a hiding, and the idea of an on-ramp, off-ramp cracks, cracks me up, and it was something that Glenn referred to, because to have on-ramp, off-ramps, you've got to have a road, and if you're investing in the road, the likelihood of you ditching that road is not a financially prudent decision, or all those types of things. So I think, let's get to the point where we can start building that waka, or start building that road, yeah, so we can just build it once, build it well. So I, I support it as it stands.
Councillor Kurak.
I think if, when we start going down that road, or jumping into the waka, and we have a destination that we all agree with, currently as I see it, but rather than taking the, the faster track approach, I'm really supportive of this because it slows it down. So when you're on that journey, you, your eyes are wide open, you consider, you know, obstacles ahead more, you stop and take a breath, and are more open to opportunity as you progress down that road, or rowing the waka in that direction. And so you're less likely to miss opportunity. And I think taking the, the softer approach, the more collegial approach, in terms of not specifying or being too prescriptive around who we choose, is probably a, a better approach, because on your stops along that road, you are more open to who you engage with, and are more likely to get passengers on, on, on board, if you're taking a car or a waka, to go along with you to this beautiful place. I'm sounding like Trump. But it's, it's, it's a journey which, which potentially is a better one in terms of arriving at a better destination through the process and the eyes-wide-open approach. So I do support it, and I hope my colleagues, colleagues consider the discussion around the table, and perhaps change your view, because ultimately, all it does is, the worst case is delay, because I think in that delay, you know, we do, as whoever mentioned before, we have elections, you know, looming fairly soon. We take a breath, and it allows the discussion, and perhaps when you look at the next resolution, I like to add the words, like, post-election or something, that we start, you know, talking to our fellow councils in a nice, meaningful, collegial way, and then look at where this journey's going to take us. So I strongly support the deputy mayor and her proposed resolution, and appeal to my fellow members to consider, you know, taking a bit of a slower approach.
Councillor Shawla.
Thank you, worship. I, I don't support the motion, but really good to hear a, a range of views around the table. I suppose there's a couple of things. Two years is a lot of time to do due diligence, three years is a very long time. Also, what concerns me is that third year will be putting us into an election year, where maybe views around the table might change around self-preservation or other things. So I think the opportunity, while we have it in front of us now, to stay this course and do due diligence in a robust manner, that provides the same outcome for the people that are supporting this motion, I think is clearly on the table and a very viable and strong option, and a more prudent option. and strong option, and a more prudent option in the overall picture. We actually chose to do the enhanced consultation. We spent probably more money than we ever have. And the numbers came back, they weren't high. We all know we had three and a half thousand chose to submit on the Speedway, and on this we had, you know, a relatively small number. But those numbers were still clear that the direction that we should take is a CCO. Whether that's a multi-CCO or a standalone CCO, we should be clear that today, we respect and respond to that by saying we will follow the path of a CCO, as opposed to saying we will stay in-house. And that's not responding to what we've heard and what we've seen. I do understand councillor Kurak's talk about taking it slow. Like I said, two years, there's a lot of work already been done, get our heads under the bonnet. And the mayor did talk earlier about on-ramps and off-ramps. And if we have integrity on this, if it doesn't stack up, and what we think are the numbers changes, and at the moment, be clear in-house, well, let's be clear, I don't know, that's 200 million, we're talking 10, over 10 years difference. It would probably, I don't know, but, you know, the numbers, as we do the due diligence, may change this, but that's a lot of money difference. That's a lot of money out of people's pockets. I don't know, you respect that strongly, councillor Kurak, delivering the best and the least and the lowest for your ratepayers. So I think that's a consideration we also have to take into account. The other thing is, we've spoken about the Iwi involvement, lack of it early on. As I read it, the letter we got from the Iwi was giving us, whether it's a neutral or a positive, but carry on, do what you think is the right thing to do, just take it slow, do it properly, take us on the journey with you. So again, I think we can do that today by moving towards a decision on a CCO and taking Iwi and the whole community with us. Due diligence process, it's up to us. We can make that at whatever gateways we need to go back and check in with the community, update them. But I'm very comfortable. We won't be rushing it. There's a lot we will learn over the next two years. I do think by starting down this journey, we will be in a good position to lead, because we would have had those discussions, had those conversations, talked to other councils genuinely with respect, proactively, to see how we can work with them to form bay waters, if that's what it becomes. So, yeah, I don't support this, but I certainly respect the views of the table.
Councillor Morris or Councillor Taylor? Do you want to... Councillor Morris?
I'm disappointed. I needed to hear from councillor Taylor to help me with my decision, but I'm going to have to forego that privilege. Yeah, thanks to the debate team, it's been good. And I appreciate the passion around the table and the willingness to lead, because I think if we look at a Bay of Plenty context, as Hemi Rolleston, our most recent appointee to the council table, was saying, if you're not at the table, you're on the menu. And if Bay of Plenty, if we are not a region together, then we're certainly on Wellington's menu, in my view. In terms of regional leadership, though, I think in order to lead, we need to have followers. And if we don't have followers, we're not leading. We're sort of a bit like me 20-odd years ago, earlier in my married life, sort of marching off up Mount Taranaki while my wife was still in the car. And off I went in a huff, and then it got cold and I came back down and came back to my senses. Such relationships. But she's forgiven me, we've been together 22 years. I'm also reminded of those very wise words when it comes to leadership from Kendrick Lamar, which are, "Sit down, be humble." And I think, again, that's really important for us as a region, that taoranga, we look at our colleagues and we offer our leadership. We don't impose our leadership, we offer our leadership, we offer our resources, and we say to them, "Come, let's go together. Let's, we're not going to kick a can down a road, I think we're going to build a bridge, and we're all going to get over it together." So let's do this together. I think that the resolution on the table enables us to do that better.
Thank you. I just, I'm just keen to get some clarification around what this means for a Water Services Delivery Plan.
So we needed a position for the Water Services Delivery Plan. And from what I'm hearing, it's likely what you're saying is in-house service delivery would be the basis on which the Water Services Delivery Plan would be for the 10 years, because you don't actually have those bay councils, which is your proposed model here, signed up that we can prepare currently a Water Services Delivery Plan that would align across the bay. So that's not an option in the timeframes that you've got under statute. You could have a conversation with Western Bay and Thames Coromandel as to whether the Water Services Delivery Model is a multi-council CCO from 1 July 2028, but that's not how I'm interpreting this motion that's on the table. So we will need clarity about what basis are we preparing the Water Services Delivery Plan on. So that might be a, that would need to be another recommendation and resolution, because this one currently isn't clear enough for us to do that.
Can I just show a question, Christine? What isn't clear enough?
My interpretation is this, is that your Water Services Delivery Plan would be an in-house for 10 years, but I'm not clear, because you've got a 1 July at the latest before transitioning. So I think you would need to, to a CCO, so we'd need to be clear as to what basis are we preparing the Water Services Delivery Plan? What period of time is it in-house? When are you wanting the Water Services Delivery Plan to be based on a transition to a water entity? And who are the parties in that water entity? Those are the information or decisions that we need so that we can turn around a Water Services Delivery Plan. We won't now be able to do that by the 18th, so we'd have to do that in another time period, but before the 3rd.
Just to the chief executive. What I'm saying is that this resolution is modeled quite closely on what Rotorua Lakes Council did. And I'm aware, having watched the meeting, that the chief executive from the council felt that it was quite straightforward for them to deliver the Water Services Delivery Plan based on a somewhat similar resolution. My understanding from DIA is that if there's not a specific set of partners, then the in-house model is modeled, and we've got from our staff a number of times very clearly that the in-house is compliant. We've heard from DIA today that it's compliant. So is there a genuine issue here with what the deputy mayor and councillor Rolleston have put forward? Because it seems like if Rotorua have done that, I'm kind of not understanding what the actual issue is.
Through the chair. And look, I don't think there is an issue. I think on the basis of that resolution, we'd prepare a Water Services Delivery Plan for a period of 10 years. If things changed throughout that three-year period and before 2028, we'd resubmit on the basis of those decisions.
The chair, can I clarify what I believe Christine, you said before, we have a year, I think was the timeframe to sort of, to give indicative numbers or to give indicative direction for that. So maybe just to clarify what the year relates to.
So you can resubmit a Water Services Plan until September 2026. And just to clarify, the point I'm raising is my, what I was saying is my interpretation is this resolution isn't in-house for the 10 years, but I didn't want us to assume that, us do the work, bring you a Water Services Delivery Plan in the timeframe that's getting closer to a statutory, and then you go, and that's not what we expected you to be bringing back. So all I'm asking, all I'm asking for is clarity. Have I interpreted that correctly? Or if you had, because you've got that other date in there in a water organization, were you expecting the Water Services Delivery Plan to show a joint with TCDC and Western Bay? We want to make sure we're bringing back you a Water Services Delivery Plan that you would be comfortable moving forward. That's all we're trying to do.
Do we need to put a couple more words in there then, to be clear, Christine?
I think just another resolution after this to say, request the staff prepare a Water Services Delivery Plan on the basis of an in-house model for 10 years, that's really clear, and we can bring that back. As I say, it won't be next week, but we'll bring that back in time to meet the statutory timeframe.
And the 10 years comes from where?
Yeah, the legislation requires the Water Services Delivery Plan to be a 10-year plan.
Mr. Chair? Can I ask, is it helpful to staff or to anyone to push with, you know, to clarify that one year, that we can actually, if we have gone through a process as described by some of the elected members, to work through this and by September next year, there's a sort of a deadline for that? Do we want to indicate in this G on the basis of an in-house model for 10 years? And then, I'm not the best, yeah, acknowledging that this can be updated to the final model, however, you know, someone better than me can word some of it.
Yeah, yeah, I've got this coming.
I think the CEO has confirmed that this is, this is in agreement with what the legislation currently requires, allows for. Can I just get confirmation from Christine and...
I'm just thinking, you need to prepare and adopt a Water Services Delivery Plan. You can't say until further decisions. You need to, legislative, you need to prepare and adopt a Water Services Delivery Plan. So you can't, I don't think you can say prepare one until further decisions. So prepare an in-house model, full stop, and then note after submission, further, after the Water Services Delivery Plan has been submitted, sorry, so after, if you go for a period of 10 years to deliver through an in-house model, that's a full stop. Because that's what you're going to submit to DIA.
Do we need, do we need the rest of it? Because that's...
Well, you could delete it, or if you wanted to, you could say, note that after submission, further decisions may be made, that may result in amendment, but you can't link those two things together.
It's only if, it's only if we make other decisions that...
Correct, only if you make other decisions.
So it's kind of, I think it's, if we make a different decision, then we'll have to change our Water Services Delivery Plan. I don't know if we need to specify that, though.
Thank you, Chair. I guess, I think that it is subtle, but I think the issue is that we are all agreeing that the ultimate plan is to be a Water Services CCO, and we've got a timeframe of 1 July 28, which is the legislative requirement, at the latest, so it could be a year earlier. It could be with the same prospective partners that were in the other resolution, it may not, could be bigger, smaller. The issue, I think, around this is that, you know, we're not dancing on the head of a pin, to be clear. We're trying to accurately capture the intent of this, which is to have a multi-council one as the plan. And if we don't say anything about that, you know, to use your wording, Mayor, that it would imply we're just going for 10 years with in-house. We are not intending to do that. I don't think that's the will of anyone in the room. I think it's to go in-house until we have defined the partners and agreed, you know, to push the button. That's all it is. Yeah.
I actually think G is actually just noting that a Water Service Delivery Plan will be prepared for, you know, will be adopted, prepared, submitted for a period of 10 years. I think it's just noting that, because at the moment, the resolution that we have requires us to do that.
Is the 10 years in the current resolution? Did we bother to put it in the first one, or we're just putting it in here now? Because that, to me, is, if it's a requirement to have 10 years, it doesn't really have to be in the resolution. So to me, it's, so therefore, I don't think that 10 years is required, because that just is, that's pushing it in a different direction than the intention. Because this is saying, we've got it in-house for 10 years, which is not the intention at all.
Yeah, correct. I think it's just noting the fact, and I guess...
Yeah. Councillor Shawla.
But take that forward, the period of 10 years out.
Obviously, I spoke against this, but I'm still after clarity. In a, so how will we, so you suggesting we will deliver a Water Services Delivery Plan that says for the first three years, we're in-house, and after three years, we are WSO? Because if you're not, so we're not doing that?
No, we have to do a 10-year in-house.
So we're saying we are rejecting the concept of a Water Services Organization today? Because we'll have no control over that in the future, will we? We may think we want to go again, but we don't have any control over that.
No.
So just for clarity, what we're doing today is, we're setting ourselves for 10 years as we are, that's all we'll have control of, is that right?
Well, that's what, we have to submit this by the 3rd of September, so between now and then, we won't know who our partners are, so there's no way that we could...
So how can we put the words in that we're going to transition to a Water Services Council-controlled organization? How do we know that?
Well, we don't.
So why is that even in there? How can it be in there? No, the one above it, the F. If we pass this today, we lose control of that process, so how will we then say that in three years' time, we're going to make that change? I just don't see how that can make sense.
Yeah, councillor has a point. In fact, I think the resolution is determining, predetermining a future decision. I don't know that council's in a position to be able to predetermine a decision that this council or another one may well make. And so I think there is some, there's some editing to be done, because it signals very clearly that a decision will be made, and you can't determine that.
There is a further, what was chosen to be put up there was part of a wider resolution, which my understanding from what was shared between elected members is that it will say, should council decide in the future, after due diligence is undertaken, not to join a multi-council WSCCO, or whatever words we use, then the fallback position will be blah or blah. So... So to me, that context answers any staff concerns. Because we have, if you mapped it out on a, on a little page with, with arrows and everything, you would follow through a process that just says, first step is, what are we doing at, you know, on the third of September? Second step is, what's the goal by no later than the twenty eighth of, of July twenty eighth? And then what is the third one is what is the fallback if, if things don't go to plan? And be clear, the plan, as I understand it, is to do a multi-council C C O. Whether I like it or not, that's the plan, is the will of, of, I think, most people here. So at that point, there is, what's the fallback option? And that has to be there anyway. We've talked about off-ramps. So this has been very explicit about saying what are those off-ramps? We just haven't put it up on, online yet for people to see. So maybe it's helpful to get that up there and.
Is it useful rather than before transitioning, that we say with the intention to transition?
I may be reading it wrong, but I just think we lose, two, two things, but I don't necessarily have the right to debate anymore. But if we say that we are ultimately keen to join, do the C C O, I don't know why we aren't saying that as opposed to the opposite. I, I struggle at a fundamental level with that. But I think we're putting, I still can't see we're making a decision, one decision today. I don't think we can make the other one. I think we lose control of that process. And therefore, therefore, all due respect, therefore becomes nonsense in a way. But I might, I may be reading that wrong from a logic point of view. But I think we are opening up a huge range of variables that we'll have no control over. And I think urge everyone to consider this.
What, what I'm going to suggest is that we actually take lunch and we come back in half an hour and in that time, we can, we can, we can just get this, make sure we, we've got this resolution completely correct. So we'll, we'll take a break now till.
Right, the question to, rather than, I'm not going to make a statement, just a question to the C E E. Before I ask the question about that motion and how the Rotorua Chief Executive managed to get that through and there was, indicated there were no problems with it, I'm wanting to understand, is the problem with the wording of the resolution? Or is it with the, you know, what, what some elected members may see as perhaps the wrong decision or something along those lines?
Over the lunch break, we'll take some advice on the wording of the resolution. The purpose of resolution G, in my view, was really just to advise so that councillor aware that the Water Service Delivery Plan on the basis of this resolution would be prepared for the ten years. Assuming through this resolution that a decision would be made at some stage and the future would require us to resubmit an amended plan, so.
We don't want to have a lack of clarity in what the Water Service Delivery Plan is doing. Bring it back to you when we've got right up to statutory deadline and then you say that's not how we anticipated you were going to interpret our resolution. So that's really what we're trying to clarify. However you want it, we can make it. We just want to make sure that what we're doing is what the majority view is expecting us to do in that Water Service Delivery Plan.
Yeah, on, on the basis of the resolution, the Water Service Delivery Plan would be prepared for ten years. Okay, it was really just making that point for clarity. Knowing and understanding by the resolution that it may change, although the intention is for it to change. And we're just trying to clarify whether or not council can, can commit itself to a future decision like that and have a surety.
But surely that's the whole point of this decision is that we are committing to a decision before the first of July twenty twenty eight?
Yep, all right, we'll, we'll let, we'll get that done and come back at one ten.
Rotorua is in-house, the Water Service Delivery Plan, yep, yep.
Welcome back, everybody. So have we, have we got any change to the resolution during the break?
We just changed the date of, it was, we had the date of the first of July 2028 after business unit, in-house business unit, and we put it down to after the fact. So this is now saying that we will, we will have a service delivery model delivered via an in-house business unit before transitioning to a water services council-controlled organisation for water and wastewater services at the latest by one July 2028, with an option for council to also include stormwater services. And we would, G would take, will be prepared for the duration, not, will take out period of ten years. So it would be notes of water service delivery plan will be prepared for the duration.
Yeah, okay. So, sorry, I'm just, just, so can we have a resolution that we're saying we're doing one thing and then delivering a water services delivery plan that goes against our resolution?
But is that in the meantime?
Because we're committing, we're committing to, to a Water Services CCO.
So we can have G to say, "In the meantime"? Notes before that, "In the meantime"?
Yeah. councillor Taylor?
Just wondering, we've already debated a previous motion that looked quite a bit different to that, from my way of thinking. Do we start this process again with this new addition G and the rewording of F? Or, because that isn't what we debated earlier.
Sorry councillor Taylor, what's different? We had, the intent of what we debated earlier was always that we start with in-house and transition to a CCO, and G was only added to give staff clarity on what they needed to do on awarded services delivery. So what do you think has changed significantly?
It's definitely different to what, than the meaning of it, I believe. Have you, have you got the original? We could sit, put them side by side and then we'd know.
Yeah, yeah.
I think through your mayor question regarding the plans, can a council deliver water services in-house for a period of the plan, and then for the remainder of the plan, deliver water services through a CCO and submit that plan? For example, until the first of July 2028 in-house, and then after that, explicit in the plan, it's a, it's a CCO?
Yes, I believe we can. Absolutely, assuming we know what that CCO is.
So the plan that we were working on, based on your previous resolution as a preferred model, had the first two years as in-house, and then had the CCO starting in one July 2027. So you could have a water services delivery plan that starts a CCO one July 2028. So that's, yeah.
But we need to know the partners if, if it's more than us.
So we've just been advised, no, because you, yeah, so you, so you'd have to either say it's a TCC-only water organisation, which would be a standalone CCO, or you would have to specify your partner, because you need to bring the financials in, into that, and so the partner start date, that would be then one July 2028. And we've just been advised that Western Bay have voted in favour eight-four for a multi-council with TCC. So that's where they are at today. But yes, you need to decide, are you in-house for the whole, are you in-house for a portion? And if you're in-house for a portion, are you moving to a water organisation which is just TCC, or a water organisation with a partner? And you need to have a willing partner that will sign up from the same date, because your water services delivery plans need to correspond.
Councillor Crowther?
I, I tend to think we're making this a bit more complex than it needs to be. The intention is signaled there. The, the water services delivery plan, to everything I understand from asking all the questions beforehand, is having to be prepared on the in-house model. Now, there's a timeframe that staff have to comply with. They will comply with that. The vote is, in my view, to decide, are we happy to not push the button on a CCO now with named partners, but to signal that we wish to push the button on that later, after we've openly engaged with other partners. So I'm not trying to relitigate, I'm just saying that's what I have understood the intention of this is. So to me, the only issue, and again, I'd asked the C, is there any other issue other than giving staff certainty that their in-house, that the in-house model will be used to prepare the water services delivery plan, and then, of course, within a year, we might well be asking them before the deadline, saying, can you now present, you know, tweak it and put in Western Bay, or Rotorua, or whoever else might end up being there. But at the moment, we don't know who else is going to be there. So the question is, do you need anything else in this resolution as staff, other than saying, just confirming what I thought was pretty obvious, that the, the plan itself will be for an in-house?
Do you like to ask that question again, please? Okay, just for clarity.
Do you need, do you need anything else in this resolution, other than what is in G saying that, you know, for the benefit of the staff, really, that, to clarify that the water services delivery plan will be prepared through an in-house model? And the reason for that being, of course, we haven't named who the partners are, which is the whole point of the alternative resolution.
We, we need to make sure that the resolution F is consistent with the water services delivery plan. And the way it's worded at the moment, it's a very clear decision there that you will be moving towards a CCO, regardless of whether it's standalone or multi, multi-party. And the other resolution is actually contradictory to that, because essentially it's saying that we're preparing a water service delivery plan on an in-house model for ten years, or for the period, for the period. And so there is an inconsistency there. That, there's some wording, I think, that could be amended for resolution F, where I think you could say it is your intention to, as opposed to it is your decision to. And if it's your intention to, then I think that says that there will be a future decision, at which stage a water services delivery plan would be amended.
Yeah, sorry councillor Morris?
They might please the court. If, if it's helpful, in collaboration with the colleagues, I've drafted a slightly different version of F and G, which, if it found favour with the move from the seconda, may be more optimal. And that's been emailed through.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm concerned that then we'll run into councillor Taylor's issue, which is the discussion was an open-ended, it was not limiting to Toronga City Council. It was saying a water services council-controlled organisation, which could be TCC only, or it could be, and I think the conversation reflected, again, not relitigating anything, but my interpretation of the conversation is that people didn't talk much about the TCC standalone, they talked about, more about multi-council. So my concern is putting in writing that that will be the transition. It might change what the staff do in terms of the modelling, but ultimately, the modelling is not the key thing, in my view, that we've discussed. Again, not, I'm not saying it's right or wrong, I'm just saying what I heard was, the intention was to keep it open around who would be in the CCO, including ourselves, of course, but including others. And so the, the previous suggestion of having, I think, Marta, you said the, with the intention, simplifies it all back to what I think was the core, the core message.
After business unit in the middle, with, yeah, comma, with the intention of take out before.
I've got always intention to explore and consider, but that might not be strong enough for you.
The intention. Well, anyone else, anyone wants to go to a CCO?
Okay, so I guess my question is, you know, with, with Western Bay obviously making a decision to, to work with us in a multi-council CCO, are we, we're not comfortable in committing to them as a partner, you know, subject to due diligence? You know, because ultimately, that's what I think the intention of this is, that we're, we're going to look at all those options and potentially commit to them. I guess the risk is, if we don't commit to them now, we potentially lose them, you know, lose that opportunity. Whereas, you know, like, I don't see a, I don't see a downside if, if we commit to them today and, and the due diligence doesn't play out as, you know, we can delay this, we can not do the due diligence until we've had those conversations after the election. But, yeah, I think there's a, there's a huge risk here. That's my personal view, but.
Clarify two things. One, one is, was, I might have not been focusing enough. Was this Western Bay resolution for multi-council with Thames Coramandal as well, just with us? Was, was the resolution of Western Bay Plenley District Council for a multi-council with ourselves and Thames Coramandal, or just with ourselves?
All right. My understanding is it's excluding TCDC. So they've, they've resolved eight-four in favour of a multi-council CCO. I shall go backwards, you can know what the sequence is today. So they went for, yeah, yeah, an eight-four for a multi-CCO, and then eight-four in favour of going with TCDC. And we're hearing that it, we'll just clarify, but it's, sorry, TCC, sorry, sorry, TCC, TCC only. And we'll just clarify that it doesn't include TCDC, but I don't think it does. No, it does not, it does not.
So, so I guess, just to clarify, the implications of that, I think, appease what you've just said, your worship, because the, you know, let's be frank about it, the, their prospective partners are ourselves, number one, Rotorua Lakes Council is the other attractive partner. If they've ruled out the third attractive partner, then, you know, I think we're on exactly what was intended by this resolution, which was a level playing field between ourselves and Rotorua Lakes Council, with almost the same resolution, subject to the tweaking that staff have suggested.
Well, I think there's a risk, so I'm just flagging that risk, so, yeah.
And it's, I guess, an interesting conversation. The resolution that Western Bay saw on our papers was to have a multi-council with them and TCDC. So the fact that they've voted not to be the same as us, meant that they've made a risk of saying, well, if we went with them and TCDC, that they would have to start again. So I'm, I'm, I'm not feeling that there's a need to make sure we're covering their, their decisions. I think the other thing is that, the reason I've personally put this up is that we don't know enough to fall on the financials and on legislation to say, let's go ahead with a CCO. We know that it's, we're intending to transition to one, but when there's less uncertainty, and so suggesting we need to do it now just because Western Bay has voted, I'm not seeing, I'm seeing there's still more risk in the uncertainty and the lack of clarity on what it's going to cost and the financials of that, than if Western Bay are, have voted for something that we were actually not going to vote for. So I don't know where they would have been left if we'd said, we'll go with Western Bay and TCDC. So to me, it's not, I'm, I'm, I think we need to look after the people of Toronga, and we need to, we know Western Bay might have had a different view on Iwi representation and conversations with them. So I think it's a, we know, we want to engage with all councils. I think the, my colleagues that have talked about showing leadership by walking with them, not trying to say where, where the lead on this is very much where I think we should be heading with that humble leadership. Is that right?
Yeah, I, I think there's just a, a risk. We've, we've worked very closely with them and we're basically casting them aside now. That's, well, no, we are, because, well, okay, that's, yeah. Councillor Rosebun?
Since this seems to be a free-for-all conversation session, this, when we pass resolutions around joint partnerships, one of the key and most fundamental principles is you walk around the other side of the table and you read it from their seat. We're trying to say by writing that, that we are welcoming everyone into our conversation around forming a multi-council or watered entity. That does not say that to me in any way, shape or form. What that says to me is that we're going to pause and wait to see what the rest of the world's doing, then we'll decide what we do. That's not leadership, and that's definitely not governance. We need to be very clear about where we, as a council, want to go. And as, as we've said on multiple times, if we are not on the bus, this, the bus is going to leave us behind. And this tells me that the bus is going to leave us behind, well and truly. Because Western Bay will have to do something. Rotorua will have an election, they will do something. And because we've got this, they'll assume we don't want to talk to anybody, and they'll join up, and we'll be parked on ourself. If your end result is a TCC standalone CCA, this is the way to get it, well and truly. We need to be proactive, inclusive, open, and we have the advantage of not having to fight for our seats at this year's annual local body elections. So we need to be very clear about the direction, the open, openness of our conversation, the inclusiveness of our conversation, and the flexibility about us getting in the car and driving over to the council, having sit-down conversation, and being very clear that we're trying to get to a multi-council CCO.
I think, yeah, I just, I agree with a, a number of that. And I think this, to me, if you're looking at it from the other side, is, is bad faith. We've taken a party along a journey, and now we're saying, actually, we're not sure we want to work with you anymore. And, you know, if, if we were on that other side, and, and Western Bay had just said, we don't want to work with TCC, in their resolution, oh, we're going to delay it because we're not sure, you know, I think we'd be, we'd be going and looking after ourselves and, and finding a, an alternative, potentially. And, you know, I, I think there's, there's a huge risk involved in that. But, you know, we've, we've, we've consulted, we've done everything with them, and now we're, we're basically offboarding them. And for me, that's, if, if the intention is to go to a multi-council CCO, there is just no doubt in my mind, our best partner is Western Bay Plenley District Council. And, you know, by, by doing what we're doing here, we risk losing that, that opportunity. So, you know, I'm, I'm not, that's just, that's just the, the honest truth. You know, like, if, if we're prepared to take that risk, great, let's do it. But, you know, I think if we, I don't think we, we'd lose anything if we were to bring Western Bay in. We put a resolution on the table that we're going to work with them, we can extend the time, we can, you know, be going out to a multi-council, we can do nothing for the next six months. But if we've got a resolution saying we're working with them, they've got a resolution saying they're working with us, we're at least bound to, to actually work together and, and do that due diligence. If the numbers don't stack up, as the deputy mayor is not sure of. If the numbers don't stack up, as the deputy mayor is not sure of, let's offboard ourselves and we'll go on our own. There's no issue with that. But, you know, this is quite a significant decision, and we just need to all be aware of what that is, and not confirming Western Bay of Plenley District Council right now, I think is, in my mind, an unacceptable risk. But that's for the will of the table. Yeah, councillor Morris.
Thank you, Mayor. And I think I agree with you and councillor Roseboom around clear intentions and respect of our other councils, because where it's currently at, I don't think it signals that well to them. Notwithstanding the fact, and I use that with a P50 confidence, that the numbers we have in front of us at the moment show a Western Bay of Plenley District Council, TCC, CCO as being suboptimal relative to a TCC alone CCO, because they use up a bit of Toronga City Council's deadhead room. Notwithstanding that, and putting that to the side, I'm wondering if the mover and the second would be happy with an additional resolution H, which says to welcome Western Bay of Plenley District Council, Thames Coramandal District Council, Rotorua Lakes District Council, Kowodo District Council, Whakatane District Council, and Portaki District Council, and Tabor District Council, as councillor Roseboom has said, for open and inclusive discussions, and participate in data and information sharing to explore the future of Bay of Plenty Waters. It's adding H there, and the wording at the beginning is to welcome.
Rather than invite.
Yeah, rather than invite. And also the other difference there is for open and inclusive discussions alongside what councillor Roseboom so correctly said.
I guess we've just had a lot of work done by both, you know, we've already had these conversations from, at a staff level, and at the mayoral forum level. You know, our staff, Western Bay's staff have done a lot of work. So, you know, I guess just to take plain devil's advocate, why would you then go, oh, we've just done all that work, now we're going to do it all over again, and then you may not come with us anyway? You know, it's a trust, yeah, so, yeah.
Yeah, thank you for the question. I think it's taking it beyond the staff level to the elected member level, to the mayoral level, to the councillor level, where we sit as equals around the table.
But not interested in bringing, like, I just think Western Bay are different to the other councils, because they're a willing partner, and, yeah. Or Thames are as well, but, you know, we've got Western Bay that won't work with them, so.
So through you, Mayor. Yeah, obviously this is coming hot off the press through Western Bay, through Western Bay, so we're still, I guess, trying to process that. But if I'm hearing right, they have kicked Thames Coramandal for touch. Our resolutions had them in here. So it does, if we're saying to Western Bay, no mai ha de mai, why aren't we saying that to Thames Coramandal? Because we were treating, and I suppose, part of this challenge is, whatever way we're interpreting, they're quite late to the party. But we've been treating them just like Western Bay in our reports, multi-council CCO, Western Bay Thames Coramandal. So I'm concerned that if we pivot now, we might pick up our little brother up the road, but we're cutting off our cousin over the hill. I know there's some differences in Iwi relationships with those cousins, but I'm really sort of seeing that we are in a challenging position here now, because we have to be consistent. And by consistent, I think right up until recently, it was Western Bay and others, but once Thames entered, it was TCDC and Western Bay. So I'm challenged in the fact now that we pivot and go, okay, Western Bay, because I think what you're mentioning here is that we don't let Western Bay go. But I think we've got to really be consistent in our application across these councils, because we're talking about leadership. I know, perhaps to pivot, maybe we've been talking around Bay of Plenty leadership, but we've been working with them in good faith till recently as well. That's my fakar.
And I'm happy to add that to the substantive.
Councillor Taylor.
Sorry, do I have to ask my question again? Like, I'm still, to me, this has changed very significantly from what we talked about prior to lunch, what we debated. So I'd definitely like to see them side by side if, if nothing else.
Yeah, we can have a look at them side by side. Well, I guess, I guess, you know, I've allowed discussion, so, you know, if there's any discussion on any of the changes or, you know, by talking, you know, happy to allow that, if anyone else wants to say, say more. But we can have a look at the. Can we use the other screen, or is that?
Yes, while we're waiting for those to come up, the, is it H? Yep. H resonates well for me. To me, it shows good governance. To me, it shows collaborative leadership, and actually provides perhaps a natural mechanism for selection, basically, because it says that we're here to stand alongside our other councils within the region. And if you make resolutions in your space that says now you're not keen, then they're on a different waka, and that's katipai. But this demonstrates that we're prepared to lead and provide a space to enable those discussions to be had at a councillor level in the public with transparency. Because whilst I do not, sorry, what am I trying to say? I know you hold yourself with integrity, mahi, as do our staff, but from what I know, conversations that are had at a mayoral forum and between staff aren't being translated back well, if at all, to the public, which is a communication issue on our behalf, perhaps. But having it elevated to this level means that, you know, the region, by default of what hell that reads, is privy to the conversations that are being had, which again contributes to our reputation around trust and transparency. And if OPO decides that they're not keen, then they're not keen. And that's one less group that we need to consider, because they've made the choice to not participate. But it allows those discussions to be had in public.
Right, so do we, okay, so that's. Okay, so councillor Taylor, have you? Yeah. Do you want to say anything?
It's been a very messy process, and I don't know that it's served us that well as far as doing stuff on the fly. I know it's probably got where the movers and seconders have probably intended it to get to. Still, to me, it's a little bit open to interpretation on some stuff. But again, unless anybody really wants to go through the whole process again, I'm happy to vote on what I see there.
Has anyone else got anything else to say before we put this to a vote? Deputy Mayor, do you want to finish off?
I just thank everyone for their openness, and I think this is a, it is a big decision, and that's been demonstrated by the passion and that everyone has shown their commitment to try to make the right decision for the people of Toronga. And I am, I think it's, and thank you for the staff for guiding us to ensure that we've got a resolution that we are able to put forward if it's voted on. And I look forward to what the vote comes out as.
Therefore, I'm happy to put the motion as on the screen to the council, and ask all those in favour, please raise your hand. Yeah, so I can just keep your hands up. And those against? That is carried, thank you. Is there any further parts of that? Okay, so we don't need, don't think we need, I don't think we need J, because we're not, K, we don't need that, L, no, we don't need that. Yeah, but there's, that's no, that's no defunct, because we don't, we're not, yeah. Yeah, so I think that now, I think that now finishes the.
Sorry, May. J says to me, the way the one that I'm reading, is that we are, like, as the resolution reads, we're going to still go through due diligence with all the options.
No, we, no.
Exploring and engaging, sure. Community should be a part of that journey, and J says that we will commit to doing that?
Yeah, I guess though, there's, it's, yeah. Until we're going down a CCO path, there's no point in. Yeah. So, okay. Yeah, so I think that now finishes off 11.4. Now we move to 11, sorry, 11.3, now we move to 11.4, which is city centre, street projects, public engagement. Seventy-nine. So what we're discussing here is effectively receiving the report and approving for community engagement on the city centre movement framework and draft, city centre streetscape implementation plan. And then obviously, as C says, it would then come back to council before any decision was made. So this is an opportunity for the public to participate and have their say on what is proposed, I guess, for the city centre. So happy to, so Emily, Shaun, who's going to lead this?
Yeah, I will, thanks, Mayor. I realise you've had a big morning, so if you don't mind, I might just introduce the paper briefly, and then we've got the team here to answer any questions. So Shaun from the transport expertise, and Claire here from our city centre engagement team. Great. So I guess I just wanted to really quickly start with the why. So our vision here is to create a vibrant and well-planned city centre, ensuring that people can move to and through the city centre safely and accessibly. To do that, we do need to replace our street assets that are over 30 years old, that don't meet the current basic needs of our users today or into the future. We also need to upgrade our streets to reflect the needs and aspirations of a wide variety of people who will use them in the future, thinking about brand-new developments, bringing new people into the city. And ultimately, we want to develop a plan, a clear and unified plan, to ensure that upgrades line up with other city developments. So to do that, we've developed two key plans that are attached to this council report. The first one, you've seen a couple of times before, is the city centre movement framework. This outlines how all modes will move around and through our city centre. This plan does take its strategic direction from both the Tipapa spatial plan and the city centre action investment plan. And then the second plan is the city centre implementation plan. So this outlines our value-for-money lens, which is taking the right spend, right place, right time approach, which is to indicate we do need to spend some money in the city centre. So where is the best opportunity to spend it, and when? So today, we're seeking approval to move into community engagement. This will refine these plans, so that the end of the year, we will all have some clarity on how people in all modes will move through the city, and which streets will be upgraded and when, with an indication of an appropriate level of investment. Ultimately, we want to give you and our community the best chance to influence this early stage of this work now. And that will, in the future, give us the ability to refine budgets set within the long-term plan, and ensure that future stages of engagement are much more place-specific, relating to the specific needs of each streets, as well as the opportunities there. So we're here to answer any questions about the methodology, and about what the next steps will look like.
Questions. Councillor Taylor.
So just for clarification, so this was, I think we'd a participatory workshop with members of the public and council some months ago, and this is the end product of that, going out to wider consultation.
That's right, yeah.
Okay. Just one thing I'd ask, to probably ask the question when you're going out. There were some conversations the other night about, at a retailers' meeting, regarding parking on the strand, for example. Given that you're talking about a movement framework, I think that would be something that would be good to delve into potentially in this consultation, what people see if there is an opportunity for us to maybe put some parking back into the strand, and then what does that mean for the direction of flow that you're proposing? So, yeah, just a heads up, I think that was something that was quite vocal about that last week.
So if I may just provide some clarity on that, a key part of this engagement is talking to the community about how they would like to use spaces, that public space now and into the future. So absolutely, that would be a part of that conversation of, do we want to be using it for road space, for parking, or for more public space, being that it's close to the waterfront and that amenity value? So that is all part of the feeling and the understanding that we want from the community as part of this engagement.
Councillor Morris.
Thank you. Looking at paragraph seven and nine of the report, starting with paragraph nine around the opportunities for input from the wider community, what does that look like? And my second question is, will the budget figures in paragraph seven be used And my second question is, will the budget figures in paragraph seven be used to inform that consultation material?
So we'll cover budget first. So budget that was put into the long-term plan was very much a placeholder at the time, being that we hadn't done this engagement. We didn't understand from the community and this work what that right place, right time, right spend was. So as much as, yes, there is budget in the long-term plan, I would draw your eyes to the fact that in the current three-year cycle of the long-term plan, it's fairly minor spend with ramping up in the long-term plans that would be then able to be reviewed by yourselves in that long-term plan process. So the answer's yes, but we don't necessarily want to hold ourselves and that conversation to the community necessarily to that spend. It may, for example, actually end up that that right spend ends up being a whole lot lower than what we have in the long-term plan. Or it might end up that through that engagement and then discussions between yourselves, that you would like to allocate more. That is a decision for this table to make at that point in time. We'll then let Claire talk a little bit more about how that engagement will look.
I might just quickly add to that, that what we're trying to also articulate here, that currently the budgets that are set within the annual plan don't reflect the current works underway in the city centre at the moment. So it's really important with this work that we tie this into the new developments that are happening. So we don't run the risk of opening the brand-new library and then six months later chopping up Willow Street to prepare that to be an upgraded street. So what we're trying to land now is an indication of the priority of the streets, their level of investment, so that we can get that budget line much clearer going forward. Cool. Kia ora, everyone. Yeah, so just a brief picture for you of the engagement approach that we're looking at is community-wide. So we'll look at some strategies around an online survey, all our general communication channels we'll be using. And then we'll be looking at more targeted stakeholder engagement. So looking at trying to make sure we tell a story for you around all the different perspectives of what people are thinking around this project and give you that diversity of perspectives. So people from the city centre, people from outside, different users, covering that full range. So, yeah, we can... Happy to meet with you again and go into the details of, yeah, the planning.
So, sorry, just on that and taking learnings from our Mount Parking engagement approach is, yes, we do understand that we need to target those who use the space very regularly. We also need to go wider to the community, which is where that survey and where that advertising budget gets spent. But also taking advantage of when people are around that we can talk to. So this timing allows us to have that conversation with STEMFest and have a council present as part of STEMFest to talk to those that are coming to use the spaces as they currently are, so that we can have that constructive conversation, just as an example of how we'll look to get wider community.
Councillor Crowther?
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, I can see the logic in what you're trying to do to bring forward. It looks to me like maybe three or so times the spend in FY20... Financial year 26 to 2028 compared to what was originally there. I think there's a great logic that you've seen, Emily, around that. I think for me, because it's a contentious issue, as, you know, most things are probably in terms of spending money, I think it'd be really good to do one of our engagements. And I've seen them by TCC, by our partner councils, where it's very open-ended. And we try to bring in all the different views because there are people, and I'm looking at my two colleagues on the right, where we were at a parking meeting with CBD businesses. And I'm sure a number of them would not want their customers to be tripping over on broken footpaths or anything like that. So the investment is needed. The question is what scale of the investment? And then people in the outer suburbs in Warkham Bay or wherever might have views around, you know, how much should be in the CBD? Because they will know, whether we say it or not, we don't have to say it, but they will know that there's a limited amount of money. So to me, it's to be open, to be transparent and to put the rationale for putting, you know, the spend in the right timing, but to then give those options within that of, you know, do we just want to keep it a bit basic? Do we want to go all-out, gold plate, so to speak, or whatever? So that, I don't know what the question was. So are you happy to do that?
Yes, and we'll be, once again, taking that approach from that Mount Park engagement, where those questions were open-ended. We've now got systems that allow us to analyse those answers to open-ended questions. Whereas a few years ago, that just wasn't able to happen.
The other thing I would add there is, just like we did with the workshop with you and some of our key city centre stakeholders, what we want to show our community is a methodology that council is taking to understand that right spend, right time, right place approach. Because what we're trying our best to surface and articulate is that it's not just to replace broken pavers. It's also that in some case, pavements aren't there anymore because of major developments. It might be that we have a new bus superstop in place. It may be that actually we haven't historically had any tree canopy cover, so therefore we're looking to put that back. We've got some accessibility issues. So I guess what we're trying to do is surface the extent of the changes that will be required in our city centre to give the public a greater understanding of why some investment might be needed here.
Councillor Schuller or Deputy Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor. So I think just you compared the consultation with Mount Parking and it was... The survey never said the only budget for the current year is $200,000. It implied there was quite a lot. So, and even at the meeting, the couple of meetings I had, we didn't start, as Councillor Morris suggested, were saying, can we please clarify where the money currently is? So can I just get a commitment that, yes, you're going to be more open about? Like, people say, yay, let's do this. So that's a question, but I'm also just going to suggest that one of the reasons that the Mount resident or Mount Business Association has been against the licence to occupy is that their streets have not been looked after. And we put out something that said if you haven't been... The street hasn't been looked after for 25 years, you don't have to pay a licence to occupy. But I think we just... It just needs to be a... We just need to be very aware of what streetscapes are doing and therefore enabling from a licence to occupy and a parking. But be very clear, there's not spare money. If we... If there's some taken off someone else, then they're going to complain. So please, can I just have your commitment that you will be very upfront about what money is available to do stuff?
Yes, I'll just quantify that with, yes, I use Mount Parking as an example. We didn't get that perfect. We won't... Probably won't get this one perfect either, but we'll learn from those lessons all the way through. So, yes, we'll take that lesson on board and we'll ensure that a commentary around what budget is currently available is in that.
Councillor Taylor?
Sorry, I know it's not a debate, but I would also just be careful that we don't restrict our conversation by... Like, if we've only got 20 bucks to spend, the conversation isn't going very far. So I understand what Jen's saying and agree with it to a point, but we do actually have to make the conversation a long-term, speak about what we're doing down there.
I'll give you an answer, yes.
Right, any other questions? All right, if there's no further questions, then thank you very much, staff, for answering that for us. So we have some recommendations, if we just put those up. Ask if we've got a mover and seconder for the current recommendations? Councillor Crowther, Councillor Baker, thank you very much. Councillor Crowther, would you like to speak?
Yeah, I'm very supportive of this going out for community engagement. And as I said, I'm very keen to see it as a... Or glad to hear, I suppose, that it's going to be quite a comprehensive, community-wide. And I think it's... I'm genuinely interested in, given the investment that we're making in the CBD, you know, where people see the right level of investment for the streetscape, and which is the support of infrastructure. And I'm also interested in where we end up in terms of things like the bus hub at the northern end of the CBD. So there are a number of issues that need to be fleshed out. I think we're doing it at the right pace. And, yeah, I will just be genuinely interested in this feedback. And we can take that and factor that in.
Councillor Baker, would you like to speak? Is there any other discussion? Councillor Roseboom?
Thanks, Mayor. No, mine's mainly around the actual consultation process itself and the wording around the questions and answers that you receive. And thinking ahead to what's coming up with long-term plans and other consultations around potential pools, how we phrase a question to get an answer and does that work for a different subject matter? Because it's something that we've... That I've realised in my short time here that we don't do very well as a council. So we need to experiment with the way we ask questions. This is going to get good community engagement because it is our city centre. And we're talking about footpaths, playgrounds and trees and gardens. How we phrase those questions will somehow may improve the amount of engagement we get back. The right question dictates a response. How we phrase that question will improve the level of response and may add to more feedback. We may end up with more than we intended to get. I think that's a good thing, we should try endeavour to achieve that. So just play around with how we word the questions and then learn from that for the next consultation. Change the wording slightly to get a better response or just more engagement, really.
Yeah, I think my comments are, you know, this is an opportunity for the public to have their say on a plan that has been developed and that's a process. There's two key things here. There's the streetscapes, which is, you know, the... How everything looks. But there's also the movement framework. And that is also very important for people to have a look. And, you know, just flagging in this consultation is, you know, the strand potentially turning into a one-way system and Gray Street doing the same. So, you know, this is the opportunity for people to have their say. If you don't agree with that or you think there should be something done differently, this is the opportunity to come and tell us so we can get feedback. And I know from what we've done around this, there's plenty of views around the table. And a lot of them are contradictory. So, you know, this is the time for the public to come and actually engage and have their say on what they think. Don't wait until a decision is made and then, you know, come back to us with all the reasons that it shouldn't happen. This is the moment that, you know, it's very important that our people get in behind this and tell us their views because there is no decision being made. It is a plan and we're awaiting that feedback before we make any further decisions as to whether we should implement it as-is, make changes or stay as we are. So I think that's a very important, you know, as we go along. This is the time for people to engage. Councillor Schuller?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I also think, you know, there's a lot of investment in the city centre to transform it and bring it up into something that we could all be proud of. And I suppose, yeah, this part of it is in some ways the icing on the cake. The other little bits that maybe you wouldn't always think about, but important to get right in the big picture of what the city centre is going to be for our future of the city. So really do encourage as many people as possible, not just from the city centre, not just the businesses, but from all around because we want... Once we build this, we want a lot of people coming. And so to get as much input as possible, I think will be a great outcome in itself.
Right, if there's no further discussion, would you like to finish off? Councillor Crowther, or you've said your piece? All right. Therefore, I'll put the motion to the council as on the screen. I ask all those in favour? Those against? That is carried, thank you very much. Right, next item on the agenda is temporary road closures for annual events in 2025, 2026. We've got Jenna and... Oh, sorry. Page 119. We've got Jenna and Lyn... Oh, no, we've got Nick. Here we go.
I hear... My area... My area. Sorry, we haven't got Lindsay here today, so I'm standing in for him, supporting Jenna. And in front of you, you have the annual schedule of events. And we have an obligation under the Local Government Act to approve that after having notified it to the public, which was done on the 27th of June and closed on the 18th of July. And I understand we had no feedback. So putting it to you for approval or if there are any questions?
Yep, Councillor Taylor?
I just noticed the STEM Festival is in Durham Street, right where the new bus depot is. Are we coping with that when it's closed for the day?
We work with the regional council and through their traffic management plan, things are relocated and managed through that with the transport team. They know about it annually, it just didn't happen last year, so we do work with them on that, yeah.
Councillor Baker?
Thank you for this. Just on point four under the executive summary, really good. Just needing clarity on the second point. The cost for temporary traffic management will also be covered by the event organisers?
Correct.
Councillor Roseboom?
Just one quick question. We don't have an event for Armistice Day. Has it just been overlooked or have no takers to present something?
No, there is one planned down at the War Memorial in Papamoa, I believe, by the community group down there that lead their ANZAC Day services. It's not in here because that's a park road there that gets closed, so it doesn't need to go officially through this paper.
Thank you very much. Oh, well, there's another use for Google Maps.
All right, if that's all the questions, thank you very much. And Councillor Baker has kindly moved that. Have I got a second, Councillor Taylor? Thank you. Any discussion on this? If there's no discussion, then I ask all those in favour of the motion, say aye. Those against? That is carried, thank you. So now we'll move to 11.6, which is on page 126. Council-controlled organisations, final statement of intent, 2025. I think that should be 2026, not 2028, but... And invite Caroline to... And we've got Sam Fellows to present on this, thank you.
Thank you, Your Worship. So the final statements of intent cover the financial years of 2026 to 2029. So what I'll do is I'll just do a brief overview, so just for any members of the public that are watching this meeting. So as you are aware, in April, as council, you provided your feedback on the draft statements of intent for council's main CCOs. And through that feedback, the draft statements were developed to align with council's letters of expectations that you provided to the chairs in December. And also through the recent governance-to-governance catch-ups, you've also provided some further feedback as well to the chairs. So with all that feedback that's been provided to the CCO boards, they have finalized and adopted their final statements of intent and attached to my paper. If you do have any further feedback, I'll be more than happy to take that back to the chairs straight after this meeting. Thank you very much, Your Worship.
And I note just all the... And I note just over, there's a, there's a separate agenda item, which is separate attachments, one, which contains the full statements of intent, just for anyone interested in that. Yep, councillor Baker.
Sorry, can I ask for something really annoying? And it's way out of, came to me late, so I'm sorry I didn't get this to you or to Manawataki, the trust earlier. But considering Otamataha Trust are a shared owner of the land, it might be good to include in our calendar, yearly calendar of meetings with the trust to actually have a joint, us, them and the board, just to help improve harmonisation of the collective, get on the same page. It saves those board guys coming up so often when they can all come together because they meet with them separately as well as with us. So might be opportunities to kind of do that together occasionally throughout the year, but also improves those relationships as well.
Yep. Yep, councillor Crather.
I might just have forgotten this, but in the Bay venues feedback on page 128, it talks about the change to the visitation target reduced from 2.2 to 2.1 to reflect the final approved budget. Can you just remind me or tell me if I haven't ever seen it? What was the rationale for that in terms of the, is it just the overall cut to the budget or is there something specific that has reduced the projected visitation?
Yeah, we'll have to check with Tourism Bay Plenian and come back to you on that one. Bay venue, sorry, my apologies. And my, my understanding is around, yeah, reduction in opening hours and budget and things like that. But I don't want to talk on behalf of them, I'll get them to come back on that point.
Yeah, I guess through the chair, the reason I'm seeking clarification is probably just that we had had a discussion earlier where there was talk from my colleagues not to give some extra funding, but also they didn't want to drop on the surface level. So I just see this as maybe a semi-live discussion to sort of see where we end up sitting on that.
Well, I think, yeah, as, as part of that discussion, for example, QE2, I think, I think there was an agreement by dropping the, the money that, that, for example, if there was no bookings, they wouldn't have someone on-site. So, you know, there was, there was, you know, that, that sort of quid pro quo, I guess, you know, with, with reducing that, that budget, so.
Yeah, just to, but to be clear, that was if there were no bookings, I guess all I'm saying is we're saying there'll be one twenty-second less people visiting these venues. That's quite a significant number, talking, you know, just, just under five percent. So just, just wanted to be clear, we're not doing something that Bay venues and ourselves may not want to be happening here. It's not to be addressed necessarily in this meeting, but maybe to report back to the mayor and confirm a bit of that detail.
Yeah, we'll get them to come back on that and no doubt they'll definitely discuss it in the governance to governance meetups that you have.
Yep, deputy mayor.
Thank you, Mayor Mahay. Thank you for this and thank you for the, the way the feedback is provided. Just on Torongar Art Gallery Trust, we did ask for benchmarks and they have said they haven't been open, so they're not starting those till twenty, after 26, 27, but they did, used to be open. So I would have thought that there can be some, we would like to see, you know, we've, there's been quite a lot of investment in Torongar Art Gallery Trust. I think it's important that we do actually see what the, you know, before they closed, our visitor numbers. And I think, I'm just feeling that the, the benchmarking is a little bit qualitative rather, and I just think that, I think we just need to be, they have talked about the fact that they're getting, they've got some more commercial ventures that's going to do some stuff, but I'm just feeling that it's a little bit loose on its first eighteen months of actually we've improved since we were, since we closed and with an expectation quite significantly. But the benchmark suggests it's not starting till after 26, 27. So I just think that that's, I feel they've pushed the can down the road a little bit, sorry.
Yeah, thanks for that and I know that they're definitely watching, so no doubt they took that feedback on board, but we'll definitely pass that feedback on to them.
No doubt, I think, yeah, check please.
Yes, I will check.
Thank you.
councillor Taylor.
Can I just clarify a question the mayor asked earlier? We've talked, calling these 25 to 28, that's the financials, but we do these every year, is that correct? The statement of intent is annual?
Yes, under the legislation, the CCO board is responsible for developing and adopting a statement of intent on an annual basis and it covers the following three financial years. So next time what I'll do is I'll be much clearer in terms of, it should be 2025 slash 2026 to 2028 slash 2029, yeah.
Right, is there any other discussion or questions on this? If there's no more questions, thank you very much staff for providing the input on that. Have I got a mover and seconda on the proposed resolutions? Yep, councillor Morris, councillor Taylor, thank you. We've got those up there now. So effectively we're, we're approving the statement of intents after we've given feedback and they have responded to that. And I ask if there's any discussion before we put this to the council, no discussion? Therefore, I now put this to the council, ask all those in favour and those against. That is carried, thank you very much. Yep. So now we're going to move on to 11.7, which is parking permits. Oh yeah, sorry, that's the supplementary agenda, which is three in Stella. No, that's not right, sorry. It's four, yes, sorry, the late reports. This is the one we, we brought in, so this is 11.8. So, yeah, happy to open the floor to Shaun and, and to Nick.
Just by way, thank you, thank you, your worship, just by way of quick introduction, on the 14th of July, council approved parking controls for the city fringe. But for us to investigate and report back on what was at the time a residence permit, and that was, that was debated at the time in terms of numbers and whether it was to be residence or open to the wider travelling public. And we've done some work on that. We have since that time met with you all and got some guidance as to what you wanted us to consider in that investigation. And we now have a proposal put to, put to you in terms of what that could look like and costs.
Right, thank you. Is there any questions for staff on this? Yep, councillor Taylor.
I just don't wonder whether there might be a bit of confusion between the terms residence and rated property when we're talking about these permits. So just so we're clear, the offer is out to the rate payer of the property concerned? Is that the proposal?
So.
Who may or may not be resident, is my point.
So, so the intention is for option three, that we provide a discount to the resident, not the rate payer, but we're basing the property title based on per, per rated property. So that's taking into account the, the situation that sometimes you have multiple dwellings and be they formalised or not within the one property. So providing us a, a way to delineate who, how many properties we provide discounts to.
Okay, sorry, I'm still not a hundred percent clear. So I'm renting in a flat on, let's say, Fourth Avenue. How do I then become the permit holder?
So.
So it gets sent to the rate payer, is that?
No, so.
How do you get hold of me if you, if you don't know my details?
So we'll be putting out some communications depending on the, on the result of this meeting. That will go to, to the residents. We'll then say, there's a form on our website, get in touch with us, include as an attachment to that form, proof that you reside at that, at that address and then we'll issue a discount. So we're going to use, like, for example, if you, if you go to a bank and you need to provide a proof of address just from a letter that you got sent, we'll utilise that.
Sorry, so my cousin lives with me in my flat? Is it the first and first served, is that how it works? Or do we both get them?
It'll be first and first served in that situation, yes.
Thank you, mayor. Just quickly, just on the numbers of parks that we're looking at in that, that's in the orange zone? Getting that right, eh? That's what we're calling it, no?
You're talking purple zone is the city fringe paid, the orange zone is the time restricted, which we're not considering.
Okay, so in, so in the purple zone, so there's seven?
There's approximately 750 car parks within that purple zone.
And the, and the allocation, sorry, is the one per?
So if, based on the staff recommended option three, the allocation would be one per, yeah, property, that equates to approximately 600 properties within that, within that zone. Also noting that because there would be a cost to that permit, we wouldn't expect every property to end up wanting a permit.
Yep, councillor Crather and councillor Taylor.
Yeah, if, if I was foolish enough today to revisit the issue of the daily peak cap charge in the purple zone, and if my colleagues sort of classified this as maybe we're already relitigating a decision, so we would not be doing any more than what we're doing anyway and looking at, from a staff perspective, would that blow the whole thing apart and cause us to go backwards? Or can you change, without changing the hourly rates, can you change the cap on, on that without a problem? I'm just happy to whatever answer you have to give me.
I feel like that's a really loaded, loaded question.
I'm genuinely not trying to show.
Yeah, no, I, I do appreciate that. From a system perspective on the parking system, yes, we could change, change that. I've done a little bit of looking and how you'd do it would be you'd do the first two hours as 50 cents each and then you'd step up that $2 an hour until you got for, to example, $8, $8. So that's how you could do it and then you'd change the permit value representative to that, to that change. The risk in doing that is predominantly around how, how occupied those spaces are going to become because we want those spaces to get to that 85% occupancy. Now, going to be a bit honest here, it's a bit of a, bit of an educated guess at this point in time what that right capped amount is to ensure that we get that 85% occupancy because we don't want to get higher, we don't, don't want to get lower. So there will need to be some adjustment through the period. If that adjustment is now, then look, as, as staff, we're happy to, happy to consider that. So I'd, I would recommend however, not going below that $8 maximum cap at the moment. So if, open to yourselves to have that debate.
That's very helpful, thank you.
councillor Taylor.
Sorry, my cousin and I are persisting here. So he beat me to the draw and I didn't get my 80% discount. So I can still buy the, the standard permit, what sort of discount does that give me?
So what we're recommending, if you paid for a six-month or one-year permit, you would get approximately 10, you'd be getting approximately a 40% discount compared to paying for every day. Now, my suggestion to you would be on the app through the permit, you do have the opportunity to change your regio between one another and given the likelihood, you can then decide, given the likelihood of both of you having your cars in that pla, on street in the period of time where these time restrictions apply, which is only at 8am to 5pm, are you realistically going to be paying that amount? So likely that you and your cousin would end up actually finding it would be better financial sense to share their permit and then when you do have both cars there maybe for an hour or two because you got home early from work, you'd pay that dollar if you got home at 4pm per se.
councillor Rollaston.
Speaking of cousins, a lot of people have, there's been a big increase of parking at Matapehi just over the last few days, so I'm assuming they've sort of got wind that something's come in and so they're all parking over there. So anyway, we'll park that for now because that might be something we need to work on in the future. As those that don't know, maybe five or six years ago, there was a lot of community meetings around the increased parking. So sometimes you fix something and then you create another one, but we'll leave that for, picking up on that cousin theme, I've got a cousin that lives in a flat there that doesn't have a car. Can I have my cousin's park to that property? I'm just hypothetically saying that. Or is the car attached to the property? When the, when the request comes through from my cousin, it basically is going to give somebody else their park, is, are we ensuring that? I know there's always been gaming of the system, but have we, have we worked through that?
We, with the, with the current way of doing it, we wouldn't be able to solve that without significant backend and policing. And that would also remove some of that flexibility about, for example, your cousin could buy a permit and then when he gets visited by, by a visitor, they could just add the visitor's regio to their, to their permit for that day that their visitor was visiting. So the answer is no and I would, we don't see it as being significantly an issue to mean that we put in a whole lot of additional process and procedure around that issue.
So how, how easy is it to, to switch?
It's, we'll be providing a, on the, on the website how to do it, but it's able to be done through the Pay My Park app.
So you just go into the Pay My Park app, you sw, you select a different vehicle?
Correct.
Yeah. So like, yeah, okay. councillor Cora.
Thanks, another consequence could be boom parking, have you considered the impact of that?
So we have a number of no boom park restrictions and bylaws around the city centre that is enforceable through fairly significant, what's now a fairly significant fine. We are not planning to change that as part of, and some areas don't, so we're not planning on necessarily changing that as part of this process. However, we will monitor it and we can change the status quo relatively simply if we do find there to be an issue.
councillor Roseboom.
Yeah, thanks mayor, mine's a very quick one, more to do with the comms. The parking permit gives residents quite a nice discount. How do we explain to them that that's not a right to park, it's just a discount if they're already there? If they leave and come back and the park's not there, have we, how we tend to explain to them that it doesn't, they don't get a designated park with that permit?
As we found in parking, you can put a disclaimer on the website or on a sign as many times as you would like and there will always be people that, that miss that. But we do, do appreciate that that is a key concern with this, with this approach and we'll be communicating it as clearly as possible. That includes within the app where you buy a discount, a fairly blatant disclaimer of, buy a permit, a fairly blatant disclaimer on that exact element. We, to that too, we casually call it licence to hunt rather than.
We, to that too, we casually call it licence to hunt rather than a designated park per se. And I guess we do have some learnings too from when we introduced it in the buildings. And that there was some misunderstanding around licence to hunt versus actually having a designated spot. So as Shaun says, we'll have to be really clear in our communication on that.
Sorry, Shaun, can we just go very back to basics? You know, because this has obviously created a lot of angst in the community. So why are we doing anything at all?
So a number of other cities around the country have not done anything around parking management until it gets too much. And in particular with the national policy statement a few years ago, we are unable to require new developments. And like it or not, around our city centre is becoming more dense, there are additional developments. And while we can't, because we can't require those new developments to provide car parking, means that there becomes a much heavier burden on street to provide for those car parks that aren't being provided within private property. So we are trying to proactively manage parking in a way that there is a understandable and set amount of parameters around that. So that if somebody was to develop a property or purchase a property, they understand what restrictions there are on parking. They understand that parking is a valuable commodity around a city centre. And they can take that into account for their for their thinking and for their decision making. Whereas if we weren't to do anything and were to then in a couple of years' time, we would have to revisit this conversation anyway because of that development. We'd then be putting a whole lot more residents who have just purchased and are unable to then take that thinking into account. So we're trying to be proactive with this.
Thank you. No, that's a good answer. And what about my friends in Seventh Avenue that, you know, are now pay, sorry, there's now timed parking? Is there still availability of all day parking in those streets as well as the time?
So Seventh Ave has only one side of the street is is time restricted. So there, and then there's Edgecombe Road also has all day car parks. So the idea is that we have some time restricted car parks that allow for residents or your friends' visitors during the middle of the day. They can turn up and park outside of your friend's place to to go see your friend. However, your friend would also then be able to relatively close to their own property also be able to park all day. So we're trying to find that balance.
Thank you. Very helpful, thank you. Councillor Taylor.
Sorry, Shaun, just a few things that people have asked me about that maybe you can clarify. I think there's still quite a bit of misunderstanding on some of the areas. And you just named Edgecombe Road as one that potentially is still going to be all day. Whereabouts would people find the information they need to know a specific zone and how that operated?
So on any search engine, if you type in TCC parking, you will then find a first link will be parking at Taronga City Council. If you click there and then you click on the first link that comes up of where to park in the city, there is a nice colourful map that we've been referencing today that talks about these different zones.
Just to follow on from that, will we develop a how to guide to just to add further support to residents as this change is being implemented? Should this change be implemented?
Yes, so on that on that webpage, we will also be having a how to. So we'll have an application for that resident permit permit scheme of or discount. Not wanting to preempt your decision today. And then as part of that, we'll also be providing both on the webpage and in that email with that discount code or permit, how to use the app.
Right, thank you. Is there any for, yeah, councillor Roseboom?
Just on this, referencing the purple and the orange sections of this parking map. If this is reasonably successful, are we looking at rolling it out across the city?
I don't know if that's a question to me or your or your colleagues.
Well, would it be fit for use across the city?
We plan to in a month or two come back to you with the responses for our parking engagement. And as part of our previous conversations, we then discussed making sure that we could then discuss other areas within the city that required a look for parking management of some kind.
I'm sorry, can you just define the time that both the paid parking and the time limited parking, days of week and and time that they apply?
So paid parking applies 8am to 5pm, and that is Monday to Friday. Time restrictions typically in our city apply 6am to 6pm. In these expanded zones, we have, and that's every day of the week. Within these expanded zones, we have added supplementary plates to those streets that say Monday to Friday, so that they do not apply over the weekend.
So it's 6 to 6, Monday to Friday?
Six to six. And that, if we decided as part, when we could, relatively simply within a bylaw, change. For example, if you wanted them, rather than starting at six, starting at eight, but at the moment, six to six.
That's a change of a bylaw though, is it?
That's the change of their parking bylaw, so it comes to you every second meeting.
Councillor Crowe.
Shaun, excuse me, why are the differentiation between the paid and the time restricted in terms of start and stop times? Couldn't they just align? Was there a reason for that?
There there isn't a, it's more of a historic item of traditionally, and it's more nationally, that time restrictions as a default are six to six. So that is, that's why that applies. We have tried to apply from a paid parking perspective, a sort of reasonable commuter or approach to when people are using those parks and when people aren't. The other benefit of having that as a as a difference is, for example, if you were to park in a P120 or a P60 time restricted space and that finishes at 6pm, that also means that you can park from, say, 5pm for free. So it doesn't disadvantage necessarily the time restricted, even though it might feel like it does. Correct. And sorry, I have just had somebody confirm that no, most of our time restrictions are starting at 8am.
Oh, so the new ones are 8am?
Eight, 8am.
Till?
Till six. Yeah.
Okay.
So you could park from 10 till four, oh, sorry, 4pm to 10am without issue.
Yeah, okay, no, thank you. I guess the the other part, and I don't know whether this is an additional resolution or just an action for you. I guess a lot of what we've heard in the community, people are worried around, you know, popping in and out of a business. And and, you know, that the, whether it's looking at options for that. You know, potentially having it easier for customers to to come into the CBD and and shop. So have we have we looked at options of, you know, an hour free or half an hour free? Or, you know, in the CBD, a free after 3pm? Have we ever looked at any of those sort of options?
We have at a very high level, based on some of the engagement that we've had recently with businesses. I suggest that it's probably a more full report because there are positives. But there's also some procedural and enforcement, potentially additional enforcement costs around those options, so, yeah.
Yeah, well, I don't know, do we need a resolution to ask you to do that? Or can we just give you a direction to to investigate some of those options, I guess, of what we've heard through this process? As well as, you know, just some innovative ways of how we could potentially. Because what we want is we want people coming into the CBD. You know, we want people to be able to pop in and grab their coffee from from a business without, you know, in a paid parking zone without getting a ticket. If they're out of their car for 10 minutes or whatever it is. You know, it's just sort of freeing up that that little, making it convenient for people. You know, with with the intention, if you're there all day, you're going to pay. That's that's sort of the balancing act, I guess, of of this.
So to answer your question, I'm comfortable with it being just part of the action list rather than requiring you to draft an extra resolution on that. I would like to take the opportunity to, and we've put it out in our communications, that we do provide a 10 minute grace period in our current enforcement activities, so that if you do pop out and pop back in, we typically will not ticket you unless we see that you're really abusing the system. So I just want to make sure that that's clear as well.
So I had one more question around the parking on the street. Because I understand, you know, it's $2 an hour for the first couple of hours and then it goes to $5 an hour. So in the app, have I got an option of effectively paying for an hour? And then at the end of that hour, it alerts me that my parking's run out. I can then pay for another hour and then I can pay for another hour. So I'm effectively paying for $16 for my day parking on the street?
So I will have to 100% confirm, but as I understand, it remembers that you did that. So it does then add the $5 afterwards. I have to admit, I've never tried it myself, so.
But what, how do you know? Because it just says street parking, so I might have parked somewhere for two hours and then gone somewhere else?
I'll have to report back on.
No, thank you, that'd be great.
Sorry, I've used the app on occasion and it does send you a push alert if you're running out of time.
Yeah, but then can you just do it hour by hour? So you can keep going at $2? Yeah, but if I if I have to my two hours at $4, can I then renew it at $4 for the next two hours? Councillor Crowe.
Shaun, there was a free after three quite a number of years ago. Well, I'm not sure when was that removed and why was that removed?
We've tried a whole lot of, a whole lot of different solutions to parking. Solutions always come with significant compromises. So that was something that was trialled, as I understand, didn't see any benefit. The negative of doing a free after three as an example is it actually restricts your all day paid time then to more like six hours. Which, yeah, six or seven hours, which then means that we actually have to increase. People who do genuinely want to park for only six hours are then paying the full day rate, so actually paying more. So that is why we'll report back on on that because there are options like that available, but there are also negatives to doing that. And I have just had confirmed that, no, you can't just keep renewing $2 by $2. It will notice that you've done that and it will then add $5 to that third hour.
Cool, thank you. It's good to know.
Just on that, would it be an advantage to time limit that? So you can only renew once, rather than someone who's got the ability to pay? You know, because those who've got the ability to pay can park all day, but I thought the idea was to promote turnover?
Yes, but we, so we can also, and that's another option that we'll report back on, of doing like what's on Durham Street with the in the paid area 120 minutes. And you get you get a fine if you park over that. However, acknowledge that there are some people that do need to genuinely park longer than that in front of a business. So that's why we do provide, rather than capping the time restriction, we just make it a more expensive car park. So trying to, there's.
$39 for a day, Rick, so I'm not sure, too many people are prepared to pay $39 a day when you could park in a parking building for 17? Councillor Crowe.
Just another sort of left field suggestion. One of the concerns that's been sort of bubbling to the surface as we discuss this, and I've thought about it before, is this difference between the residential dwellings and the people who, from what I have been told and observed, probably a lot of those people with vehicles who are parked on the side of the road, they move out of the area. But contrasting that to the businesses down in, say, Glasgow Street area, where we are now imposing for the first time this paid parking. And that's where, for them to pay for a permit and then not be able to get parks would be quite an issue. And I guess what I, when I think through it very practically and I look at, you know, the lay of the land there literally, that there's there's a sort of a defined area between Elizabeth and Third Ave and down in Glasgow Street that's got a particular issue for businesses and their customers getting parking. So it's not just a matter of money, it's a matter of access. So is there any scope to have a different? Again, without upsetting a previous decision or anything, I'm not trying to do that. But is there scope to say, as we move into a permit system, to have a permit for the other streets which are primarily residential? Or in the case of the domain area, you know, non non-business and non-residential? And have this, have what we're proposing there and then down in that one business area to have a different solution, which would only provide parking permits in that area for businesses who pay, not for the general public. So you couldn't get someone who who lives out in Maiwa or Toomey Tai coming in, wanting to have a slightly cheaper stay in the CBD for the day while they go and work and use up a valuable space down in Glasgow Street. So that's the intention I've got. I know it's a bit clumsy, I'm just trying to see, is that a genuine path forward? That if we want to make sure that the businesses in that more high density business area are better catered for to still pay, still pay the same amount, but not allow as much competition from the general public?
No, I don't believe we could do that unfortunately without splitting that zone completely off and adding it. Yeah. So something that if we do really see it as an issue, I don't see why. And that six monthly report back that we committed to under a previous paper that we couldn't look at. For example, Glasgow Street being treated as a completely separate zone.
Councillor Shola.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a quick one, just on the, so you've got the residence permits, approximately 600 properties in that 750 car park zone. But you've also got potential non-residents at the reduced of the 40%. Is there any thoughts of a cap on the amount or that would just be whoever? Huh? The number?
So we have have looked at that and within the app, we'll set a limit to how many, how many permits can be can be purchased. That's not necessarily a hard limit, but that's allowing us to then catch up and check that we haven't oversubscribed from a permit system.
Yeah, and just on that too, I mean, one of the early goals of this was to standardise parking in the city. And I just, I've got the colours on a spreadsheet here, you've done that really well. Also noting that a lot of areas, prices of charges have actually reduced as well. So just with that there, with the combination, I think it looks like it's pretty averaged out in terms of where we've added price or reduced. With the potential use of these here, is there a significant impact on income? Or is it a relatively small number of parks, Shola?
So given that the all day parking, well, yes, that shorter term parking has has either stayed the same or decreased. That all day parking has increased, which has resulted in a slightly higher expected income compared to last year.
Right, thank you, councillor Crowe.
I'm sorry, I understand this is sinking lid, so current residents, so moving forward, future residents won't be able to apply? And has this got a certain timeframe which would expire for everybody after what, one, two years or three years or what's the intention?
So the recommendation is that, given this is the first year, residents are provided an 80% discount. We would then, or yourselves would then discuss that as part of user fees and charge. We would then, or yourselves would then discuss that as part of user fees and charges in the upcoming annual plan of, do you think 80% is still reasonable? Or would you like that to be 50 or even lower percent of a discount? And with the idea that the permit stays in place because that is somebody paying a reasonable price for the car park. However, then residents may or may not have a discount, and that would be your sinking lid approach.
All right, thank you. Thank you very much for answering all those questions. I think that was very helpful and hopefully explains the situation to a number of people that have concerns. We now have some recommendations. And these are around parking permits, which effectively mean that people have options around buying permits that allow them to park at a cheaper rate within that city fringe. And also there is a discount for existing residents of properties within that zone. So this is, I guess, the response to residence permits, et cetera. But this is also open to the general public. So asking if we've got a mover and seconder, councillor Taylor. Councillor Shawla will second that, thank you. Councillor Taylor, would you like to talk to the?
Yeah, it's been quite an issue, I think, for the last two or three weeks since we first removed residence permits from our motion at a meeting. We've had a number of meetings since then with members of the public and garnered a lot of discussion around the cost of parking in these areas that aren't or haven't been previously charged. So I think we've done a reasonable job of getting out there and understanding what's going on. And I think this is a good solution for most. It's not going to address the issue for everybody. I think we're still going to have some parts of the community, and I'm thinking the number of students perhaps that contacted me regarding their accommodation in Selwyn Street, where they won't probably be eligible for the residence discount, but certainly they'll be able to get the concession discount. But again, it's still an extra cost for them, so I do feel a bit for them. The other thing that I think the mayor alluded to was the ability for us to look at some other solutions to assist the businesses in the CBD, which came to the fore in a meeting last week. So letting those people know that we've heard what they've said and that we are open to have the discussion. So hopefully, staff will come back and we'll actually be able to have that discussion with the businesses in the CBD. So I think this is a good step forward, but I'm picking that it's not going to be perfect.
Councillor Shawla. Any other discussion? Yep, Deputy Mayor.
I'm just going to, I'm finding, I'm struggling a little bit with this in terms of what the problem is, and we might have a problem in the future, but I, I'm, it was, I think, poor communication that this went up on the website before it had come to council, and that has sort of got things going. I'm just going to, I'm not going to support this recommendation because I think we talk about a vibrant city, but we keep bringing in costs. People are renting in the city, people are, there are students in the city, and we actually want them in the city. And I think we forget that $1,500 a year is another cost that, or even $10 a day is another cost that people will struggle to meet. And I think it's just something that we are, we talk about looking after our city centre, but on the other hand, perhaps, and put in extra costs that I'm not sure that we're going to make any significant money out of this, other than the cost of all 15 of us in the room, 20 of us in the room spending hours debating this, and then bringing it back to a user fees charges. So I just think we have to be careful about how much bureaucracy we do bring into the Taronga.
Councillor Crowther.
Yeah, I'm finding this a very difficult decision. I'd encourage my colleagues to speak to it, because I am interested in views around the table. I guess for me, the biggest issue that I see is with some businesses who will be quite badly impacted if they typically have their own vehicles and customer vehicles who have, you know, been established in an area for, in some cases, many, many years. And all of a sudden, they have to pay what you could argue is a big step up from zero. I know there's arguments that it's still cheaper than in the CBD itself, but that argument applies to Cherry Wood, to use my neck of the woods, or a lot of other parts of Taronga, to councillor Roseboom's point. And I guess I do hear what the deputy mayor says, which is, you know, what is the problem? I think the problem that we identified was partly addressed by, or significantly addressed, by those time restrictions selectively applied in the avenue. So I think the staff have done a great job in not blanket time-lifting it, but at doing what they think is perhaps the best balance between unlimited and limited time. So that seems fine. I think my colleagues will recall, I voted against the initial decision. I voted for the resolution that enabled staff to implement, you know, the fees on the grounds that I'd sort of lost the first vote, so to speak. So I feel like I'm trying to work my way through to be supporting what we want to do here. We need to raise money from parking to pay for things. We need to cover our costs. We also need to encourage more people into the CBD. I honestly think this is a very, very difficult decision. And I guess my instinct has always been to have, to start off with a lower fee and then work up rather than risk going too high. So I, you know, I'm still in the camp that probably says if we're going to do it, I would prefer the lower numbers, but I'm aware that requires resolutions. And, you know, I can imagine we could go 120, 600, 1,200, but at some point, that won't be enough for someone. And then for someone else, it's, you know, it's going in the wrong direction. So I'm just looking for what my colleagues think is the best way to work through this, to get the balance right for our people.
I think around this, we're not actually talking about implementing parking in the city fringe. That decision has already been made. So we are now saying, here's a, here's a solution to some of the angst that we've heard in the community. And this is, this is a way to ease some of that for people that park there all the time. I think that's, that's what this, what we're talking about today. You know, I think we've discussed that issue. I think there is actually an issue, and if you've ever driven around the streets and tried to find a park, it is, it is very hard. And if you go down to Glasgow Street, or, you know, up to Park Street, or down Selwyn Street, it is very, very hard to find a park. So I think there is an issue that there isn't enough supply, you know, for the amount of demand. So, you know, that's why we went to make the city fringe, you know, being changed to time limits and to paid parking. And yes, I am supportive of this because I think this gives an option for people to have a reduction, especially those residents that live there, as well as people that park regularly. And, you know, it's a, it's a way to ease people in. But, you know, I think listening to Shaun, it is also a message, you know, to those developers that an off-street park is valuable, and, you know, that there is a price. And just because you can park on the street now for free doesn't mean that that is a right that you will always have. And, you know, I think we need to put a value on car parks. And there's a reason that the city doesn't have any, well, very few private-operated car parks, because it's, it is too easy to park for free. And then, then that means that we, as council, are the ones that are providing all the car parks. And, you know, providing car parks actually has a cost to our ratepayer. And, you know, I think that's, that's where we're headed with this. So, you know, I think this is a, is a solution, as councillor Taylor said. It's not going to solve the problem for everyone, but it is going to ease a lot of the concerns that we've had. And I think, you know, as councillor Taylor said, is, you know, we need to continue to look at other ways. This is separate to this conversation of activating our CBD, making it easier for people to come and shop at businesses and be in the CBD. And I'm confident we'll have some options around looking at some innovative ways we may be able to help that out, you know, which is, which is actually separate to this. So, yeah, I'm supportive of this motion. Any other discussion? Councillor Shawla.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I understand both sides, but happy to support this, a significant, very significant saving for residents and a significant saving for regular users who know that that's a place where they want to park. And I suppose the staff, you know, through this process and going forward undertake, they'll, you know, always have their continual monitoring, continuous monitoring of this. And of course, we'll always be open to feedback and looking at ways to get better. But it's one of these issues that one size doesn't fit all, so.
Councillor Rollaston.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, look, there's no easy answer to this in terms of the challenge that we have and how we might solve it. But on balance, I think that's a healthy discount to residents. They would have preferred it to be even further, but, and then there's a healthy, there's a reasonable discount to those that are parking along. I think we've just got to make a decision. I guess looking to the experts that are working in parking regularly. And I think we've just got to monitor it and be prepared to, if there are big challenges, well, that's for us, is listening to the community and be prepared to bring it back if it creates a lot of challenges. We can keep changing that number, we can keep pivoting, but I think we've just got to make a decision and wear it, monitor it and accept it. Thank you.
Right, if that's all the discussion, councillor Taylor, do you have anything to wrap up? Therefore, put the, the motion as written there to the council. Ask all those in favour? Those against? Deputy Mayor, thank you. That is carried, thank you. So now that end of the public meeting. And I just want to call for a mover and seconder to go into publicly excluded, and then we'll have a break. So councillor Crowther, thank you. Got a second, councillor Roseboom, thank you. I now ask for the council to support us going into publicly excluded. And all those in favour? Those against? That is carried, we're in publicly excluded. We'll take a, yeah, we'll have a break till 3.25. If we could be back promptly then, and we will, we will deal with, with a couple of publicly excluded items.